If you go on around about 7:00 p.m. last week, the planning board will come to session, meeting will come to session. Initially, we have a review of old and new business planners report. Are we doing a full planners report tonight or we're not?
We're not going to do it tonight in the interest of time.
We do have some minutes from June 23rd that were submitted.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June 23rd, 2022.
I'll second that.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Couple of minutes here.
It's just a discussion.
Okay. So, we have a discussion here with Mr. Bonvy to stoppage Phase 1 completion schedule for the Lawson Farms subdivision. Mr. Buckman, Mr. Bonvy?
Yes. Thank you. And so, I understand we have a little bit of a time constraint. I will go through the process and where I stand today and what has been done and what I plan on doing in the near future. We have started the work on the sidewalks. Preparation of those sidewalks was begun either Monday afternoon or Tuesday. The town engineer, town DBW director, Chris Gallagher and another gentleman, I forget his name, was out on the site to inspect the sub-base, sub-sub base, the burrow of those sidewalks. He approved the location that we started with, which is, I don't know how many feet, but it is ongoing. It will continue to be ongoing. We have some, we have a couple of people actually that are ready, willing and able to do that job once the preparation is complete. And that's what you hear from a lot of subs today is, "Complete the work. Give me weeks notice and I'll be there." And so, I believe that I've got the sidewalks under control. I believe the sidewalks will be completed in approximately, my son tells me tonight, he's working today right there as we speak, still on the site, by the end of next week, the sidewalks will be down to burrow. And then, at that point in time, I call my contractors and at that point, well, it can probably two weeks, so I would say three weeks from now, you should see a sidewalk at Lawson Farm. And then, the next note, my granite, I'm experiencing some issues. And those issues are as follows. I said to this board last fall that I had my granite ordered, which I did, and that granite was going to be coming in this spring. It got ready to be shipped about a week ago, guessing, I'd have to look to the folder. It was too much material and it wasn't the material that I wanted. And I had a couple of other issues with it. I stopped that granite at that point in time. I had a backup supplier, again, in this folder, I have that in the folder with a quote. And at that point in time, the supplier told me, asked me if I wanted to stop the shipment and I said yes, knowing or figuring that I had a backup supplier. I had felt incorrectly so, I guess, that things have gotten a little better in the supplying of granite. And so, that didn't work out. I called my backup supplier three days ago and my backup supplier purports to me, reports to me that granite is a huge problem. And I asked him why and he said, "Because the blocks of granite that are quarried out of Georgia," no, yeah, out of Georgia, "are no longer being sent up from Georgia and it is eight, nine, 10, 12 months out." I then went forward, did a lot of research. I also have, in between all this, I've contracted with Bobby Baker to do my work on these curbs. Why? Because Bobby's done a lot of curbs in this community. I think he's well-respected, at least that's what I'm told. And so, Bobby was on vacation this week. I've reached out to him. He called me about an hour ago, returned my call. I said, "Bobby, I'm in a world of hurt." And he said, "I think I can work this out. What we've got to do is, we've got to find 800 to 1,000 feet of granite on a weekly basis or every two weeks. That'll keep me busy. I'm back on Sunday." I've also made several calls. I've located a couple of companies in Georgia that say they may be able to get it to me. What I'm saying to you right now is, I'd like to report to this board next week on the outcome of that granite. I understand the necessity. I understand the requirement. I understand where I am at with that. I made a mistake and it didn't turn out the way I'd hoped it would turn out, but I don't believe all is lost. I believe I can still get it done, although at this point in time, as of this moment right now, I do not have granite. But I also believe that I can get granite because I'm going to do what I have to, not even within reason, to get the granite.
So, you do understand that if Bob or whoever your sidewalk contractor puts those sidewalks in, you're at risk if they collapse or there's, you know, nothing there to hold them up? So...
Yes. So, there was an interaction between myself and Gabby when I, I didn't want to take too much time, but so, when I had a conversation with Gabby and I changed from curbing to sidewalk, she sent me an email saying, "You understand, you're liable." At which point, I replied to her, "I concur with your statement 100%. I'm liable for everything in the subject."
No, no, I understand. But I'm just saying now, it's even more pressing because you know you don't have granite necessarily in the queue, ready to back those sidewalks up. So, there's a higher, and even though you have a wide, a wider than normal grass strip there, you're still, you know, if it goes for long enough, the chances are good that that will collapse.
Totally understood. It's my problem. It's my fault. I'm guilty and I'm going to do whatever I need to do to back them up and I'm going to do, and I'm going to listen to Bobby. Bobby's been doing this a long time. I had done some business with his father, I believe, years ago. And I'm going to listen to Bobby and we're going to do what we have to do to make sure that things are stable on sidewalks and then we're going to search the world. And I've already called a couple of people that have flatbeds and asked them if they're prepared to go to Georgia and they tell me they are. And frankly, I'm going to do, if anybody knows of any place where they can get slope granite, I'll go there and get it. And I don't care if it's California. And that's a commitment I'm making, period. My mistake, and it's, and I didn't feel it was going to end up that way. I thought I had two suppliers in this piece, in this folder right here, I have two quotes as of two months ago. Both quotes were saying they had both material ready to go. So, I'm going to go around the world, that's what it takes to get the granite. And that's my commitment. It's my fault.
Nobody in Vermont, nobody in New Hampshire, nobody...
So, you're now talking to a semi-granite expert. I had felt that most granite came from, or comes from Vermont, New Hampshire and our granite state. No, no, no. It comes from Georgia. Comes from a town in Georgia called, and this is important because I really, I was freaking out when this came. So, I talked to McCain and Granite Company out of, and they're in Elberton, Georgia. Elberton, Georgia is the capital of the granite of the world. Number one in the whole world, not the United States, the world. They have 19 other suppliers. The lady I spoke to said, "My boss may sell it to you, although we're backed up." I says, "I'm in a world of hurt. I really need it." And she says, "Well, if we don't, there's like another 18 quarries in this town or this county." I said, "Well, can you give me a list?" She says, "I can." I says, "She says, "But send an email first to my boss because my boss has been allowing me to move people up in there if they're in need." I CC'd Billy and that email to that person and I said, "I really need it bad." At which point, I also called in that flatbed. And then, like I said, Bobby called me back about an hour ago and he said, "Listen, there's got to be a place to find, you know, keep me busy on a week or every other week type of basis with this granite. So, I'm going to do everything I can and I will give you updates on a weekly basis if that's what you want." I made the mistake. I felt that I had it and I just can't believe we're still in this world that we live in. It is insanity. You think that you can make a phone call and a month later, get granite and then all of a sudden, you get an email from someone that says it's a year out or nine months out.
Can we go through some other items that are on your outstanding work list?
Certainly.
On Phase 1? So, sidewalk and curbing is one. Entrance to the subdivision needs an island, but we don't want you to install curbing on the island until construction's done and the final pavement's going down so it doesn't get damaged.
Correct. That was, that conversation was having, we're out there with Gabby this week.
And the streetlights, what's going on with them? They're still not completed.
All right. So, I want to change the poles of the streetlights. I think they look terrible. I think that the streetlights, I've done some cuts, but I'm still not happy with them. I said to Gabby that I would do some research on streetlights. Understand that I received an email from Gabby, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, asked me to attend this meeting. And I did some running around to try to be prepared. I've done some research on lighting. What I'm going to do is take all the poles out, change the poles to a better pole. Right now, you've got a square fiberglass pole with a head on it. The head is a 3,000, I believe, lumen head, which meets the criteria of this community. It's either 3 or 30,000. It's an LED light. The head is a downlight. It's not a type of light that's spewing light over the neighborhood. And there are a couple of homeowners have asked me to make certain that the light goes down and not spewing. And so, I've got to, I want to keep the heads or similar to, but the poles are terrible. And so, I've got some poles here that I'm looking at, okay? I have not had the chance to find their accessibility. So, if I hand this to you and I said, "I want that one," all of a sudden, I can't get it for three months, that's not going to work. And so, I need some additional time to do additional work, to give you a cut and your professional team, your team, to tell you what I'd like to do in those poles, which I will do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
If I could just chime in, this was something we heard in December. Light poles were the issue in December. So, I just feel that's all well and good that you want to do them and I haven't seen them myself, but this just feels like more story, in my opinion. You have a lot of reasons. We still have a light pole on a utility pole right now. So, and you were in here and I think it was December. So, it just feels like, that sounds all well and good and woe is me, but we have other subdivision getting done and they're doing it and they're completing it. So, I just feel that this is a bunch of excuses, if I can be the honest one here and just say that you need to come up with a schedule and stick to it. And maybe the poles are necessary, I don't know, but it seems like that's not your problem. You have a lot of other problems. Let's get some of this stuff done and get the subdivision moving on. I know you want to do Phase 2, but personally, I would recommend, nothing starts in Phase 2 until Phase 1 gets completed. So, and it just doesn't feel fair to the homeowners and you were here in December and you told us all of the stuff and we're still, it feels like nothing's been done. Maybe one light pole, maybe two, I don't know, but it just...
I totally agree.
And we don't have a lot of time. So, I would suggest that, you know, I did make a recommended motion. I think you need to submit a schedule. You see the September 15th date. Maybe the granite is something that can't be overcome, but I think everything else can be and enough is enough.
That sounds fine. And honestly, I think we can probably move things along with the granite as well. That would be my guess. But what we need is, we need, we need some scheduling and we need a little more definitive timeline than just kind of out there.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
If the granite was the only issue, then we can consider that, but it's not. There's too many issues.
I'm rushing.
Sure.
I'll make a motion for this recommended action that by September 15th, 2022, all Phase 1 improvements, except final paving, curbing of the island and installation of street trees shall be complete. However, street trees shall be ordered prior to September 15th, 2022, after consultation with the Foxborough Tree Warden and shall be installed under the direction of the Tree Warden. Phase 2 shall not start until Phase Work 1 is completed as described above. If Phase 1 is not completed by this date, Planning Board will open a public hearing to rescind the bond at their October 13th, 2022 meeting.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, can we speak about that, please?
You may.
So, I understand the frustration and I understand it. And I don't think there's any problem with putting together a schedule with the understanding that there's a lot of things that aren't under our control, but there are things under our control that should have been done. However, I would urge the board to not stop construction of Phase 2, several reasons. The first is, I think it's in everybody's interest to keep things moving along in here. We have a short construction season in Massachusetts and, you know, holding things up for several months just kills you when you start to get into the thing. So, it could be the difference between paving Phase 2 this year and not paving it. And I think one of the things that is important to go into Phase 2 is when that bond amount was originally done back in 2000, whenever, '16, '17. You know, the world was a different place and the numbers have gone, I mean, Ron was just telling me that the price of metal ductile line pipe's gone from seven bucks a foot to like $45 a foot in a year. So, the numbers, and you know this because I submitted a modified estimate, one of our last, one of our meetings a couple of months ago, that the bond amount that's being held right now is insufficient to actually finish it. But the fact is that once you move into Phase 2 and then you come into the fact that in order to get lot releases, which of course is the, you know, the golden goose, that's how you get paid, but also is the way the town gets to catch up on the bond. So, the bond amount would catch up at that point to what the prices are today. I think that's important to consider. And then, finally, the last thing, I hate to put it like this, is, you know, we're a, we're a nation of laws, we're a nation of regs, we're a nation of permits. And there's nothing in that permit that would allow the board to hold up construction of the second phase. It was not a condition that things had to be done from the first phase to the second phase. It just said that the project had to be done by a date certain, which was last December, which was extended till next April because of the, whatever you want to call it, emergency. So, I really don't think it's within the board's purview, within the permit nor within the regulations, to stop construction of the project because nothing in there has been violating the permit. And I understand, I understand, I do, and we agree that it was, and Ron has said it about 10 times, it's his fault, it's his mistake.
We don't really care whose fault that is at this point, Bill.
Right.
I mean, there's no animus to Mr. Bonvy, but frankly, Mr. Bonvy, you need a fire put under your butt. You need somebody to tell you that if you don't start to move, that we're not going to help you along. And, you know, I don't really care who shot John here. I don't care if it's your fault, your son's fault, contractor who walked out for your job three months ago. It really doesn't make any difference. The bottom line here is, is that you're the responsible party only because you own the company and it's your subdivision. And so, you can point your finger at anybody and you can point your finger at yourself, but really, you need to get your ass in gear. And you need to like, and that means you have to call a lot of other people to get your light poles and to get your, and you know, make some progress. Show us that you're, show us at least some effort because right now, from December to now, there's been, it's been pitifully low. And, you know, I don't think, you know, Bill may be right about that and maybe we can't stop you from going forward on Phase 2, but we can certainly make a decision about lot releases and we can certainly, you know, look at things like that that are going to be important to you, just as if this is, just as this is important to the community and especially to the people who are living inside your subdivision right now, who don't have things that we're committed to that are complete. So, and I'm not talking about any personal stuff with interiors of houses or anything like that. This is just things that are, that are the purview of the board, things that have to do with the roadway, lighting, safety issues, et cetera. And, you know, you know, I think that that date that we've proffered of September 15th, we need to see some real action before that. And perhaps if we see enough, we'll reconsider what we're going to do on October 13th and, you know, whether we're going to, whether we're going to talk about the rescinding of the bond. But right now, I think that without having that kind of an impetus there to give you the reason to move people along and to really get your company in gear and find out where you can get the materials you need and get them installed, you know, we're back in the same place we were in December. And, you know, that's not something we can continue to wait for.
Now, and if memory serves me correctly, when this project was brought in front of us in the first place, we were very specific on how we wanted things to be finished before we moved to the next phase.
Well, it wasn't in the permit. It was, it's not in the permit, it's not in the regulations. And I don't have an issue with the date. You know, it's saying, "There's stuff to get done," but what I would urge the board is to not try and stop construction of the second phase. I think it is absolutely, and I represent my client, it's my job, but I think it's absolutely in your best interest, the town's best interest, in order to allow the continuation of the second phase because it is a, it's a motivation. What the chairman just said is lot releases. That is it. So, you will be controlling lot releases going forward. And at that point, I mean, if you're going for lot releases and things aren't done on that first phase, then, then it's a real motivator because now the developer is paid for the land, he's sitting on millions of dollars of land, millions of dollars of land and infrastructure that he's put in, but he can't get any lots released. That's, that's the impetus. That's the, that is the club that, and the project continues to move forward, which I think is important. I mean, we've seen too many, in how many years of doing this, where, you know, all of a sudden, projects just fall apart for whatever reason. And I think it's important to keep things moving.
If I can just add to that, prior to any of this communication, any letters being written or anything, I took on approximately $2 million of debt on this property about two weeks ago on the start of Phase 2. And so, there are zoning opinions issued by attorneys with Bill's input on those zoning opinions and et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a, there's a lot to this. I have blastards that did subject to permitting, et cetera, with a fire, all that stuff. There's a lot going on in the second phase and the first phase. And so, I just want the board to be aware of that, that there is substantial amount of debt on this property to move forward.
Which is another motivating factor, you know, that's...
There's been, there's been motivating factor all along, Bill, and we haven't seen any movement.
Well, this is, allowing all the lots were released and so, that was, there was no club, I guess, is the correct term, is at that point. But now, there would be and will be because you have all that debt out there that can't be recouped unless lots are sold. So, it allows the town to catch up with their bond and it allows the developer to move forward. And it's a, if, if, if we weren't serious before, I think the point has been made.
I would like to, there will need to be weekly updates in writing to the professional staff.
Okay.
And I will tell you that I will fight tooth and nail for no lot releases until you finish Phase 1, sir. This is not fair to the residents who have homes in that subdivision.
If I could just, for clarity sakes, I just want to make sure, I wouldn't recommend, and I think staff doesn't recommend top coat or the island in on Phase 1. I think you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, streetlights operation with the correct poles, et cetera, sidewalks and curbing in and trees in. Am I correct?
Trees ordered.
The things that Paige put in her memo.
The thing that Paige put in your memo, okay.
The island, I think, can be in, it's just can't be curbed.
Until the curb comes in, right?
Correct. Well, no, and I think they didn't want...
Well, we just didn't want to curb it because...
They didn't want the curbing until it, so they didn't want it to damage.
It narrows down too much for the trucking, et cetera. And it would get hit probably, that's why we talked about it in the field and looked at it. It narrows down really narrow and so, we felt that leaving that, those islands out during construction of the next two phases would make sense. So, I just, clarity reasons, I just want to make sure of that.
What do you want to do?
And I am okay with that.
So, with respect to the motion...
You're going to need to amend it.
If that's the case, then maybe you remove the language about Phase 2 construction with...
Well, you could just say, "We'll consider on October 14th."
Right. But, you know, again, you know, if, if what they're saying is true, maybe you don't want to jeopardize the funding, if that, you know, but say that no lot releases will be issued till Phase 1 is being done. And then, also, the weekly construction reports would be submitted, status reports. You know, even if you have nothing to say, if you're saying, "I'm striking out again."
I'm totally fine with that. That will be an email to you and Gabby, Paige, you and Gabby, and I will give you weekly updates and I understand completely what you want done.
I'm going to read it again.
Sure. Just anything else that was from Lance that was in his update, that you need to stay in touch with him as well.
Okay. Okay. We'll amend the motion to by September 15th, all Phase 1 improvements, except final paving, curbing of the island and installation of the street trees shall be complete. However, street trees shall be ordered prior to September 15th, 2022, after consulting with the Foxborough Tree Warden and shall be installed under the direction of the Tree Warden. There will be no lot releases in Phase 2 until Phase 1 is completed. Weekly status reports will be sent in written form...
No.
To Paige and Gabby, even if there's not an update and... Who's that other person? Lance.
Del Piori.
Del Piori also needs to be kept updated on a weekly basis. And is that...
You can make the motion. I just have one question, which is, are there any lots in Phase 1 that haven't been released?
No.
No? Okay.
There's my, I think I did it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second amended motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Move it along. Okay. It being sometime past 7:15 p.m., we have a public hearing, special permit and definitive subdivision for 204 East Street, 12 lot subdivision, Pine Estates Pioneer LLC.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening.
So, just as a, just as a starting point for those of you who do not attend these meetings on a regular basis, the applicant and their staff will make their presentation. We, as the board, will ask questions, make comments, and once we're done with that, we'll be happy to open it up to anyone in the audience who has a question or comment. Please come up to the microphone or either one and we will call on you and you're welcome to just give us your name and address before you speak.
And when you do come up to speak, you direct any questions or comments to the chair versus the applicant?
You don't directly ask the applicant.
Would you like me to introduce you?
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a land use attorney representing the applicant, Pine Air LLC. And this is Chris Iainuzzi from Conoco, our project engineer. And as you well know, this is a proposal for an open space residential development with 12 lots. So, with that said, we'll get right into the presentation, Chris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
May I approach the board, Mr. Jones?
Please.
We might need a microphone. He needs a microphone. He should just take...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
You need to take...
Your microphone with you, just so people don't get...
Yeah. Pretend you're emceeing.
Been so long.
There you go.
Don't break out in song or anything.
Can you also turn that so that the folks in the audience can see it?
This is on, this is on. You ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chris Iainuzzi. I'm a civil engineer with Conoco Engineers in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, representing Pioneer LLC tonight on a 12 lot subdivision in East, on 204 East Street in Foxborough. For those of you who are not familiar, and I know this is a history on this project for several years now, I brought a little aerial, bring that closer to the board to show them of where the lot is on East Street and what it really looks like. So, the applicant, Pioneer, is proposing to develop the property into seven individual single-family home lots and in doing such, constructing a cul-de-sac approximately 1,025 feet long and approximately 20 feet in width. And I'm going to move right along to the plot plan if I can, please.
He said seven, but there's 12 here.
Yes.
Excuse me, can we get a point of clarification? You said there was seven lots. You have 12 shown here.
12 lots.
Okay. You said seven.
You said seven.
Yes, you did. Okay.
So, clearly, the property is approved with one single family home.
You need your microphone.
So, currently, the property's approved with one single family home and it's accessed off of East Street through, in a budding property with a driveway through that property. And it transcends into the site about 400, 500 feet till you come to the single family home. So, as part of the development, that home will be raised and the site will be reconfigured to include 12 single-family home lots. to include 12 single-family home lots with a bridge crossing coming off of East Street, just east of the abutting property. It basically hugs that property line on this side here. And the property itself is kind of topographically challenged, it's very steeply graded, there are several wetland resource areas to cross, there are numerous waivers that we're requesting as part of this development, including the cul-de-sac length and the width and other proponents. I did receive several comments in the past couple of days, we haven't had an opportunity to address those professionally yet, but I thought it'd be worth having the meeting tonight and feeling some comments from the board itself and perhaps some of the abutters in the audience. So at this point, basically, what's going to include is 12 single-family home lots, a bunch of stormwater management devices and controls.
You just stand to one side.
Yep.
Camera.
Okay, okay, great.
You realize stage direction is important.
Thank you, Adam, thank you. And so each home will be served by private utilities, including onsite septic systems, individual infiltration systems for roof leaders and whatnot, and the subdivision itself will be served by electric telephone and gas utilities. It's pretty straightforward, it's about 1,000 feet of road with a cul-de-sac that we've worked probably since 2015 on developing. It's come to the day now, we're presenting the project, we're anticipating a filing with the Conservation Commission in the next week or two, and we expect to hear plenty of comments from that board as well.
Can you tell us why you decided to come to us first, opposed to getting your conservation, you know, approval?
Well, we felt that the process would overlap regardless if we came to you a week before or thereafter. We've been trying to get into the process for a couple of months now, and we were scheduled for a meeting about a month ago, we got pushed to today. So we thought it'd be worthwhile to introduce the project to the planning board, knowing that one of the comments would be that the approval would be contingent on conservation approval as well.
So where do you show your list of variances that you want us to consider?
So I have a written list I submitted, Mr. Chairman, and then mostly geometrical waivers, there are not any variances at this point. There are waivers for the length of roadway, width of roadway, lack of sidewalk on one side, edge treatment, curbing in lieu of granite edging.
I'm sorry, what kind of curbing?
Cape Cod curbing, we're proposing.
How long is the road?
About 1,025 feet to the end of the cul-de-sac. And that's measured basically from the edge of East Street.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of information, the list of waivers was submitted and dated June 2nd, 2022, on the Conoco letterhead.
Yeah, I see it now. Thank you.
And many of the comments we did receive from the peer-reviewed consultant relevant to those same waivers, we hope to address tonight. And recently today, I received a comment from a Cleveland town engineer requesting that this most likely should go to become a private way instead of a public way due to all the waivers we're asking for.
Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, I think that's okay for now.
Well, as I'm sure you're aware, this particular subdivision is not one that has not had its share of controversy. There have been a lot of issues relative to conservation issues, wetland issues, where you're making your crossing as opposed to an area that was probably requested somewhere else on the parcel. I notice that in the existing condition today, there's a shared driveway there. Mr. Hunt's house shares that driveway, and in this configuration, there's been an elimination of either that shared access or frontage of his home on the new roadway. So you should take that into consideration as well, please. I don't think it's necessarily particularly neighborly for you to ask an existing, a gentleman who has existing access to his home directly from East Street, have to drive a mile around to get to his home that's been there forever, or not forever, but as long as he's owned it. And it certainly was on that way from the time that roadway, the driveway was shared. So I would expect you guys to be ready to address that as well.
I believe that he mentioned that Mr. Barbado was using an easement on Mr. Hunt's driveway to access his current home. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, we're not sure of any known easements that speak to those issues at this point. There's been a lot of history, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot of history on the latest in the long line of peons to take on this project. But basically, we have no knowledge of any formal easement that defines the rights of entry to the properties. And I imagine this discussion...
How about a prescriptive easement? I mean, the guy's been using the driveway for 20 years or longer. So I'm just, you know, listen, I'm not an attorney, you have an attorney present, I'm not telling you that you have to do this, I'm asking you to take it into consideration. You're building a new subdivision, you're creating, you know, new homes, and like I said, there's been a lot of issues there relative to the wetland issues, conservation issues, previous work in the wetlands in 2014, 15, whenever it was. So I think that, you know, all those things are part of the history of this project. They may not all be immediate to where you are today, but they should be taken into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, on that point, I just want to make clear, this project is based upon a new wetlands delineation and is not related to what was submitted previously and rejected by the Conservation Commission. We recognize that we need to go to the Conservation Commission and obtain an order of conditions. But this is based upon a new delineation, I just want the board to understand that.
That's fine.
Thank you.
It's part of the record. Anything you'd like to say, add?
Sure. Have it a night. Well, I would just remind the board that there are two special permits here, and those are discretionary. So obviously, this probably cannot be built without the open space design, although I could be wrong on that, but I don't think you could get 12 lots. So there is some leverage on the planning board's part, you know, you do have total discretion on the special permits. Definitive plans are by right, but again, you have to submit a plan that's fully compliant with all the standards to achieve that by right. I do have a memo that I don't think we should go through, but it has a bunch of outstanding items. I'm assuming that those could be addressed before the next hearing. And I would note, we also have Dylan from Environmental Partners here. I don't know if he would like to speak to sort of, if there's anything important that needs to be said about stormwater, or if it's more just things that can be resolved in the next month prior to the next hearing. What do you think, Dylan? Would you like to say a few words? So this is, again, is the planning board's consultant paid for by the developer to do an independent review of the engineer's work?
Yeah, thank you. Again, for the record, Dylan O'Donnell with Environmental Partners. We had a slew of comments, some were minor, some were more significant in nature, most of them did pertain to stormwater. I don't think it's necessary to go through the stormwater comments item by item right now, but our most significant comment was groundwater. There were several test pits performed across the lot, and I think groundwater in some of the test pits we saw were roughly 50 inches down, and in some areas of the proposed development, there's significant cut. So that groundwater is actually significantly high for the proposed grades. So that's just one thing, the major comment that we saw that we'd like to discuss.
And Dylan, being in a drought, does that mean that it would be harder right now to ascertain if you had to do more test pits or whatnot? Can you, is it, does it change in the summer like this?
So I'm not a certified soil evaluator, but when you do test pits, there's modeling, which is basically discolored in the soil, so you can tell the estimated seasonal high groundwater, and the test pits do show models, so we can see roughly what the estimated seasonal high groundwater is. The actual groundwater level will be lower in a time of drought, but you can estimate at what grade the seasonal high groundwater is.
Anybody else from the board have a question?
There's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, a lot of work to be done.
So I will open it up to the audience if there's anyone here who has any questions or comments. Just step up to the microphone, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jim Lobel, 184 East Street. I live, had them for 45 years, about four doors up from the project on the Canoe River upstream, and I have no interest in the development, and it will not directly affect me, but I have some concerns. I was up at the town hall yesterday overlooking the plans, and certain things become apparent to me, and that is, it was pointed out just now that topographically, this is a pretty steep road that's going in, and it's narrower than a standard road, and so, okay. And the bridge, yet to be designed, but the location is basically right up against the curb on East Street, and then goes across the wetland and picks up the stream. So I have two areas of concern. One is fairly straightforward, is traffic. I can assure you, as we all know, East Street is intensely busy, it's nonstop traffic, one of the busiest roads in town. And my concern there is that we have a steep road coming down from a development across a bridge deck, which also, I believe from the drawings, is also on a slope, it matches the slope. So you've basically got a ski run coming down there, and it comes out right onto East Street. Now, in the winter, if there's ice, it's also a low-salt area, so they can't salt it to an extent, and if, in the winter, if it's icy or slippery, cars or trucks coming down that hill, if they can't stop at the bottom, they're going to shoot right out on the East Street. I mean, it's, I think that's a consideration. I see that as a danger, seriously. The other, more important danger, this whole project all along has hinged on possible contamination of the Canoe River, the aquifer, and the vegetative wetlands. Now, when I look at this, I get back again to this steep road that's coming down, and we have 12 septic systems that the drawings said have to be pumped twice a year. So apart from 45,000-pound garbage trucks possibly going up and making the loop, you've got possibly a 30,000-pound fully-loaded septic pump truck that's coming down that hill. Now, I know it says that, on the drawings, that there are going to be barriers, guardrails. Okay, I assume the guardrails will go across the bridge, but I think that a guardrail will protect a car or a pickup truck from probably losing control and going over the edge. I can see a septic truck coming down that hill, 30,000 or 40,000 pounds, and it starts to skid, and it's sliding down that slope, and it hits that guardrail, and I think it would take that guardrail out like a picket fence. And if that happens, that truck and 5,000 gallons of effluent are all going in the wetlands and possibly in the river. That's just a supposition. Now then, if that happens, my basic question is, who owns the bridge and who owns the road? Because if and when there's a significant spill at that bridge, it could run into millions. You're talking about an aquifer, a river being polluted for miles. Who, is the town going to accept this road and this bridge and therefore take responsibility for what happens there? Or is it going to be the 12 homeowners who are on the hook?
It's projected to be a private way, not...
A private way?
Private way.
Which means the town doesn't own it.
Correct.
And the town doesn't own the bridge.
Correct.
And the town would not maintain the road either.
And the bridge, right, well, okay, that was an answer I needed. But my question is, this is, I see that, I wonder, who would possibly buy one of these properties with the threat of that kind of litigation hanging over them? Because when that river gets polluted, if it gets polluted heavily, the lawyers are going to be coming out of the woodwork, people are going to be getting sued, and if the town says, "It's not my job," who's on the hook? The 12 homeowners? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Paul Morrison, 77 South Grove Street. When were these plans submitted, do we know? For this development?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
When were the plans submitted for the development initially?
It dated May 31st.
Oh, this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So Pioneer LLC is owned by Fred Bottomley, is that correct?
You'd have to ask, I'll allow you to ask them this question.
Is that correct?
Mr. Bottomley owns it?
That is correct, yes.
I should clarify, Mr. Bottomley is the manager of the LLC, I don't know who owns the membership interest in that.
Okay.
We can get that information.
Well, according to Secretary of State's website I have here, he incorporated in 2019, hasn't filed any annual reports. So basically, that's like driving a car with the license expired. He's not up to date.
Well, that may be the case, but that's, don't take this the wrong way, that's really not our purview.
I would look into this further and put a hold on this project until he updates his corporation papers, you know? Effectively, it's like he doesn't have a corporation that's active, you know, if you don't file an annual report. Correct? I mean...
I don't know, I'm not an attorney and...
Yeah, well, you know, I think that's, I think everything should be on hold until he produces a document saying he's up to date, because he filed his incorporation papers on September 25th, 2019, and filed no annual reports since then. So how can you effectively...
I'll defer to the applicant's attorney.
All right, well, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not aware of the LLC being administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State. It's not unusual for limited liability companies and corporations not to be timely in their annual reports. Thank you for letting us know, I'll inquire, but as far as I know, that limited liability company is in effect.
Well, William Gavin says something different.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to question or comment this evening?
Paige, do you have anything?
I would just request that all responses be submitted in writing, and if possible, prior to, you know, give us a little time so that we can review them. Our next meeting is until August 11th, so there is time.
Right. It's primarily the reason why I haven't given you anything until, we just got them in yesterday, and we're...
Right, right, yes.
A month ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Tom Hunt, 206 East Street. I have a long list of questions, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the threat on our easement. I have a letter from the town of Foxborough saying that our easement cannot be compromised before, during, or after construction of any projects, and I'd like to submit this document for the record, if I could?
Sure.
Bring it up, or...
He can answer. Make motion to continue the public hearing until August 11th or later.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote on the motion, I don't mean to interrupt, do we have permission to speak directly with Environmental Partners in order to address their...
to speak directly with environmental partners in order to address their outstanding concerns?
Sure.
Thank you.
Typically, we go through Gabby, you know, coordinate, sometimes Gabby will sit in, but certainly, we can work through it, but usually, we want to be somewhat involved.
Thank you, I just want to clarify the rules of engagement, make sure the board is informed, but try and be as efficient as possible.
Certainly.
A lot of technical engineering issues.
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you ask, if you get in touch with Gabby, she'll make arrangements for that, as opposed to doing it independently.
Is August 11th acceptable to you folks? Do you need...
Yes, it is, that's fine.
Okay, hold on one second, let's get a time. 7:15. August 11th at 7:15 PM?
Sounds fine.
A second, of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and Mr. Board, thank you for today.
And just so folks know, another notice won't be sent out on this unless we change location. We don't exactly know whether we're gonna need to be here again. So for right now, let's say we'll be here, and we'll send out a new notice if it's gonna be in a different location.
Is that accordion file yours? Mr. Buckley?
Sorry?
Is that accordion file yours? I thought that usually belonged to Frank.
They each have one.
Frank's is old and beat up.
So it being sometime just past 7:45 PM, we have a continued public hearing special permit to Washington Street, construction of 224,750-foot plus or minus gross square foot warehouse office building, Rock Point Fund Acquisitions LLC. Let me just remind the people in the audience again...
Turn the volume up a little bit.
I'm sorry?
Can you turn the volume up a little bit?
I just need to speak closer, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak closer.
Thank you.
That was just an announcement of the meeting.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully you can hear me now. So just a reminder to the audience that we will allow the applicant and their representatives to continue their presentation. Once they have done that, any questions the board may have, or comments the board may have, we will make, and then after that, I'll be happy to open it up to the public. And once again, I'm imploring you to use decorum, nobody should lose their cool, and anybody who does and cannot control themselves will be asked to be escorted out by a police officer. Mr. Spillane, Mr. Buckley, whoever's gonna start?
Good evening. I think the board received a letter from Mr. Buckley dated July 12th that brought some of the issues that were raised by the professional staff in our last public hearing. But before we get into some of the changes and responses, Griffith Properties, working with Rock Point, developing this property, would like to introduce themselves to the public and to the board with regard to themselves and some of their projects. So if we could take them in?
Please.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight. My name is Marcy Lobel, I'm the managing principal of Griffith Properties. We're a women-owned, Boston-based operator, owner-operator. We invest in real estate from Boston down to the mid-atmospheric, Washington DC. Company's been around since 2001, and I've been running it for the last 13 years. We invest in office properties, industrial properties, and life science properties. And we do a lot with partners like Rock Point. We typically own properties anywhere from three to 10 years, just depending upon the strategy, the lease-up, etc. So our tenant base is very varied, depending upon if it's an industrial building, an office building, etc. One of the notable office buildings we own, if you go in on the Mass Pike, where the New Balance facility is, we own one of those office buildings there. So we, we are very focused on the industrial sector right now, given what's going on at the world. It's one of the few sectors that is still viable from a financing standpoint and from a demand standpoint. This submarket down in Foxborough in the 495 South has a 98% occupancy rate, so from going speculative on an industrial building, it's something that we, as in the equity side, can get very comfortable with, and potential lenders can as well, given the dynamics. And despite what's going on with Amazon and putting 10 million square feet on the sublease market across the country and putting pause on deals, there's still a lot of demand for industrial space from other users. So I know it's come up asking, you know, why don't we put office here? Office is not financeable right now, and there's not a lot of demand because people aren't going back to the office. So we're trying to get a viable project here, and we love the size of it and the location. It's very, we feel very marketable, and we are prepared to go on a speculative basis. It's very hard to lease up a building on paper. We are in the middle of a $100 million speculative project in Watertown in the life science space. You can't lease it off of paper. We're finishing it this August, and we have a 25% lease. We wish we had more of it leased, but we are, but you need to actually build a building before tenants will believe it's real. And it takes about 12 months from the time you put a shovel in the ground to complete the building. And tenants are out in that timeframe, so we need to go on a speculative basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Quick question?
Yes, please.
Would that 12-month timeline that you described for office also hold true for this industrial property?
No, this is the, the 12 months is for the industrial property. Sorry, yep.
Yep.
Frank.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
The, what I'd like to just do is to talk to the board a little bit about the modifications or the, any additional data and responses that we've prepared after listening to the comments we've received from, mostly from our last public hearing. We've also submitted separately, it was to the board, but it was a separate memo to the, regarding the stormwater management system, and that was submitted and for review by environmental partners. But I'm not gonna touch on that tonight, it was all, I certainly can talk about it, but it was all, in my mind, fairly minimal, and really, you could look at that plan and you wouldn't see any changes based on it. So, so I'm gonna talk off my, my memo that we submitted to the board dated July 12th. So the, you know, I want to talk about the fact that, the additional information, and just kind of go over the area we're talking about. And basically, the fact is, is this is a limited industrial district for the most part, maybe about 20% of that building is in the S1 zone. So if you look at this, this is the zone line right here. So this is the S1, and this is limited industrial. So the majority of that building is a limited industrial, and the majority of the activity taking place. Route 1 is Foxborough's commercial corridor, and that's just the reality, the facts of life. A massive amount of our real, of taxes come out of this commercial corridor. We only have, we have some small commercial areas in the town, Cabinet Business Park, a little tiny area down in East Foxborough, Foxfield Plaza Mall. This is the area, and it has been identified as such in every master plan that I've had, that I've seen, going back to at least the 1980s. So this property is located in an industrial zone. It's been zoned industrial since at least 1965. If you look at the, that was the furthest back we could find, that's the second zoning book. There was no such thing as a special permit, it was just an allowed use and a permitted use. So the zoning at that time allowed warehouse and distribution centers as a permitted use. The project is in character with the uses in buildings in the Fox Hill Industrial Park and the immediate Route 1 area. The Fox Hill Industrial Park is over here to the northeast, and that stretches down Pannis Road. This area is about 105 acres in Foxborough. And then if you go into the wallpole piece, which is, as you come in off of Route 1, it is also an industrial area, it's a commercial area. So this is a commercial area. We do abut a residential zone. Every commercial area abuts a residential zone. It's just the nature of the beast when you have the mixed uses. We know, we know that, we understand it. We didn't have to be told at the last meeting. And so, from the very beginning, developing the project, talking to professional staff, talking to, you know, the different departments that we have concerns, fire, police, how they want, you know, to see things, we do it informally. And we also spend a lot of time with our professional staff. We have architects, we have traffic engineers, we have landscape architects, and we know right up front, we don't need to be told what the issues are. We know what the issues are when we are abutting a residential zone. We know it's lighting, noise, visual, the design of the building. And what we've done in this project, through that process that we follow when we prepare our design, is the initial design, we try to address all those upfront. Of course, we will, you know, might miss something, but you know, the way it's building is laid out, the building, the way it's physically on the ground, where loading docks are, how we light it, where the access is, all of those things are considered before we even file it with the town. So traffic is a major concern, we understood that, we knew that. Now, you look at, we were, we weren't engineers for Patriot Place, but we are residents, and we understand it, we were intimately involved with a lot of the activity, especially for Patriot Place, not so much for Gillette. So we understood that traffic is an issue, and we researched that, and again, had a traffic engineer do it. I think the police chief did the best job, did a way better job than we could do, nothing against our guys, but you know, when you have the police chief stand up and say, "Hey, we've been looking at the traffic issues for years, we've had complaints, so we've studied it." You know, we've studied the speed, speeding in 2017 twice, and 2022. And when you find that between 1% and 7% of the cars are enforcably speeding, he said it's, it's considered green. They have the green, the yellow, and the red. B Street, what I'm specifically talking about, is considered green. He found there were approximately 2,000 trips per day on all of his, they were just in that range. And he didn't have any information on tractor-trailers, which of course is a major concern. So what we did is we asked McMahon to go out, and they placed a camera on B Street for 48 hours on June 6th and 7th, so that we could be sure what kind of vehicles we're talking about. And what they found was, there were approximately 2,000 trips per day. So that is inconsistent with what the chief found, which we thought was a good. And we also found that the number of tractor-trailer trips per day, both east and west, both from north to mechanic and mechanic, there was four, four trips in that two-day period, actually all of them on one day, the 7th. They took place at, one was at 5:30 in the morning, and one was at 11 o'clock in the morning, which that vehicle turned around in 30 minutes. It looked like it was carrying hay, so it went by our camera at 11:00, and by 11:30, it came back and was heading the other way, empty. So we made the assumption that that was a local delivery, and 1:00. So really, we're talking about three tractor-trailers, one doing a local delivery with a round trip. We note that the DPW has placed a signage on B Street, there was, I guess it was there back when Patriot Place was done, but somehow taken down. So they've also taken, they've listened to neighbors' issues, they put the signage up, and they placed boulders in there, which if you have ever driven by the intersection across North Payson, that, they put boulders up there too, because at the time that was designed, the issue there was, and if you recall, that was a huge turnaround. You could turn a truck around in that, with the area that was there, and the design was put in to, to make that impossible, quite frankly, and also to discourage vehicles from going, coming out of Payson into north, they usually just flew in and out, you can't do that now, and tractor-trailers, it's almost impossible for them. So, you know, that is the, you know, the town listens, and it took action, and that was during, that was not for Patriot Place, that was for the state hospital. We've said there is a restriction on B Street from 7:00 to 7:00, and we've said, we've told the board, and we'll say, we've said it in writing now in this, that we will prepare the documentation, the studies, whatever is necessary, for the town's signature, so that the town can request that that be made 24-hour restriction, so the tractor-trailers will not be able to go down B Street. So we can't control that, you can't control it, but we will do whatever's necessary to convince Mass DOT to allow that, and it's also, you know, up to the town to weigh in, be it the Selectment or DPW, we'll go through the town, we'll just do the paperwork so that they can sign and send in. Noise and lighting, we knew that was gonna be a concern, so we pointed out in our initial discussion here, we've, the orientation of the building, we've oriented so there's no truck docks facing the residences. The closest residence is about 625 feet from the closest dock, so that would be up here and down there, in this general area. And it's shielded, you can see that for the most part, the building shields the residences from the loading docks. Also in here, this heavy green, kind of where I'm going now, actually a little bit further, this is woods that will remain, and it's not going to be touched. We'll be grading close up here, you can see that the heavier lines is the grading area. So there's probably gonna be close to 360 feet of woods that's currently there that won't be touched by us. The noise from the docks will be directed away from the homes, shielded. The point, the employee parking lots, which is over here to the west and south of the building, at its closest point is about 102 feet from the closest residential zone line, which happens to be an open space line. So there's a 25-foot open space, so it's 100 feet from there to there, and then it's another 25 feet to an actual homeowner's property line. Further again, I know I said it the last time, I'm gonna say it again, it's an issue when you have residence, residential zone abutting against a commercial zone. The zoning recognizes that. It's, it recognizes that, so in the, in the buffering section of the zoning, it's specifically... So in the buffering section of the zoning, it specifically talks about commercial to commercial. In this particular zone, it's 10 feet. Commercial to residential, it's 20 feet. We're 100 feet. So we've taken, it's a significant difference. We've gone, you know, what we believe is significantly above the requirement. At its furthest point, it's about 114 feet from the closest residential, again, add the 25 foot. So within that area though, some of the things we've done, and I've talked about it the last time, is we've, we have to grade in here. So in this particular area, we're dropping the building, the building is cutting into the ground about 13 feet or so, thereabouts, which creates, which means, you know, you're looking at a 42-foot building, but it's 13 feet into the ground. So if you're looking at it at approximately the same grade, it's not 42 feet anymore, it's about 30 feet. We've proposed burming around the outside in the areas where we can, so there's burming in this area here, and then burming along this area here. And that berm is anywhere from 7 to 15 feet, the top of that berm is 7 to 15 feet above the floor of the building. And again, that depends over here, because, you know, I was talking about 13-foot cut here, but as you move forward, the cut goes away. So that, you know, right about in here actually, it's about what the grade is, and then it starts to be a fill down there. So we've, we're retaining existing trees, we're building berms where we can against the neighborhood, and Brown Sadina has put together a landscape plan, it's a combination of coniferous and deciduous trees that have a density of one six-foot tree every six feet, which is the zoning requirement. So we believe the combination of existing trees, new trees, and berms are going to provide a substantial barrier between the homes and the building. The other thing that's concerning, of course, is lighting, and has been, you know, pointed out, there was issues with lighting over on Panis Road, different developer, different builder, but you know, it's just what people's, see it so that that's, it's in their mind. So we've developed a lighting plan that actually has been modified and was filed with the board in the modification set, that originally, we have light poles on the outside of the parking, outside of the parking, and then we had wall packs on the building. We've eliminated the wall packs. So the wall packs have been eliminated, and now we had to deal with, the lighting engineer had to play with the lighting in order to make sure we had enough illumination toward the building. And so that has been a change since the initial drawing. So all the lighting in that area is going to be off the poles, off 25-foot poles, they're LED, LED. And if you look at this lighting plan, I know it's really hard to read on the reduced set that most of you have, but I can throw it up if we have questions about it later, to show that there is almost no wash beyond the back of these parking lots. And that doesn't even take in, that doesn't take into, that plan, that program just thinks it's a blank slate. It doesn't take into account grade differential, trees, or anything like that. So it's actually worst case. It's, questions of water use was brought up. I think the DPW director did a really good job of answering that, of how water is allocated to the town. We shouldn't be mad at them, we should be mad at the DEP. The town has plenty of water, and now it's building more storage, which is, was always an issue in the past. This proposed building will use significantly less water than the existing facilities. So think about what the existing facility is. It's a restaurant, it's a function hall, and it's an outdoor recreation facility, water As we talked about before, the site is soared. The soar permit allows 13,000 gallons per day of sorage to flow, average, average daily flow, to flow into the MWRA system. The proposed use is a warehouse and a small office component, which does not have a lot of people. It's certainly a lot less than that previous use. That use, we estimate to be about 1,700 gallons per day. It's about 87% less than what could be the maximum use. Looking a little further into that, we went back and looked at the water usage for Funway, Dimitris, and the restaurant, back to 2012. We went from 2012 to March of 2020, when the world shut down. We looked at that, and we averaged it out over that eight-year period, and even then, taking those rates, it was still close to 3,000 gallons per day. So it's still almost 50% of what it is today. So there's, not only is, it's not going to stop anybody from watering the lawn, they can water it now, but it's also less water usage. So Marcy's already talked to you about the portfolio of what they do and how they do Some of the things we should talk about is, as I talked about, 20% of the building is in the S1 zoning district. So when you look at the S1 zoning bylaw, and I, there is, there's items that we need to consider, and the board considers when thinking about a project. So this special use district was established to encourage innovative and creative design of exhaustial office and industrial development. And a lot of our S1, except for what's going on around Gillette, is industrial. Down in the Annett Road area, if you go further down Route 1, on the left side, you have what used to be the New England Pottery. So there's a lot of warehouse industrial in that area. Promote economic development of the Route 1 corridor, increase real estate tax revenue. Project's going to take a site. It's been struggling because of COVID, definitely, when, you know, you shut down for a year and a half, and then, but also due to the success of Gillette Stadium. So if you think about, this is from me talking to the owners, you think about when is a wedding? You know, this place is a wedding venue, that's what they specialize in. When is their weddings? Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Well, Gillette has been very successful, good for them, good for the town, as far as revenue goes, but it shuts down the highway like 20 days a year. What days, right? Not Friday, it's Saturday, Sunday, some Thursdays. So I don't know why he wouldn't consider that, but whatever his excuse was, you can, even a person who doesn't run a business like that can understand it, and even any of the persons moving into this building would have to understand it when they buy it. We think real estate tax revenue, based on what they're paying today versus what will be paid, will be, will increase by approximately $655,000 per year after construction. One of the other items that we should need to consider is to maintain good planning and site review principles for new development, encourage commercial cluster development, reinforce front yard buffers, provide performance standards, so the site can accommodate future development. We are not proposing any future development here, none is anticipated at this time. Because of the location of the front proposed building, it has a large buffer, large front yard buffer, which is one of the standards we look at. The location of the driveway is also off to the side, that if anyone ever decided to do an additional use, you would only have to access it off the driveway. You wouldn't need an additional curb cut. One of the other items is to attract better land use, professional office research and development along the Route 1 corridor, discourage strip or ribbon type of commerce. This is not a strip or ribbon type, and it's similar to the other commercial development in the Panis Road, Harry Drive Commercial District. In my professional life as an engineer since like 1986, Foxborough has had this dream of Route 1 being like Route 9 in Westboro, all office buildings. It's never happened, and probably not going to happen unless Mr. Kraft hopefully can make something happen across the way. So, and Marcy talked to you about the fact that in today's world, nobody is financing, there is no office buildings being built or retail. So this is that type of development that will go here. To assure environmental protection and preservation, and to preserve the town's rural character. I don't know why that would be in there in a commercial zone, but it is. So the project has been designed, it's going to be in compliance with the DEP stormwater standards. You have hired a consultant, environmental partners, to review all of our documents to make sure that we're meeting the standards. We have to comply with the Foxborough Wetlands and Groundwater Protection Bylaw. We're working with the Conservation Commission on that as we speak. To address the town's rural character, as I talked about earlier, the buffers are at least five times bigger than is required. And again, these are the regs, and we're five times more than are required in order to minimize the impact. There's definitely an impact when you're next to a commercial zone. To minimize the number of access points under Route 1, to lessen traffic congestion, traffic congestion. So right now, there's two access points on the Route 1, we made that to one now, and actually, that came about as, after discussions with the police and fire department, we had our initial design, there was two driveways, and they said, no, one driveway is acceptable as long as we widen it, which is what we did. And also, this is a Mass DOT road, of course, so you can see the entrance way has the island designed by McMahon Associates to be in compliance with the Mass DOT standards. To minimize development demands placed on town services and infrastructure, excuse me, the demands on the town services will be, are going to be reduced. I think it was the police chief kind of made a joke to me, said it's not going to be a restaurant or a venue or anything, and I said, nope, it's a warehouse, because that's where their calls go to. Things like restaurants, you know, I don't know, whatever they have up at Patriot Place, dancing areas and things like that. So this is not, this will not be, this will be minimized on, as far as the police, over the existing use, and as well as the fire department, over the existing use. So the town services, and of course, there's no, you know, there's no kids involved in this. It also talks about infrastructure. So this, the infrastructure here that the town has to deal with is the water system, and the water system is more than adequate, and now that's another rate payer. Or actually, it's not another, it's just substituting a rate payer, but it will not increase the demand on the town services. And then it talks about to implement proper procedures to assure the future developments surrounding Gillette Stadium will be completed in accordance with the above planning objectives. I don't see how that applies to us, other than the fact that we have to deal with the traffic management plan. And then, in addition to that, we're also in the limited industrial zone, and the use that we're requesting requires a special permit, which under Section 10.4.2 also has criteria which states that the special permit shall be granted by the board unless otherwise specified, only upon its written determination, that the adverse effects of the use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood, in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site. So I just, again, briefly go through this, I'm sorry you're taking so much time. Talking about community needs served by the proposal, 2015 master plan, and you can continue to go back. Route 1 is a growth corridor, it's our growth corridor. It's a key commercial development zone in the town. So it meets that criteria, the warehouse office use is in high demand, and it's not projected to slow down. It's, as Marcy said, it's one of the few things that you can get funding for nowadays. Existing facilities been hampered by Patriot Place, success, which I talked about briefly, I'm not going to go about it again. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, I've touched on that already. Building orientation, parking for trucks and trailers are located on the other side of the building to minimize traffic flow, is a right turn in and right turn out, and we've agreed to limitations on the local roads for trucks, not just the fact that we will pay for and prepare the documentation, but we will accept a limitation in the permit that our vehicles must use local roads. And that is similar to one that was put in on Patriot Place, and we would accept that. Impact, neighborhood character and social studies, social structures, I'm sorry, we talked about that, the fact that we are adjacent to the south and the west by the R40. The district allows by right a warehouse office. The design includes buffer zones, parking lots, et cetera. You know, it eases the transition from residential to commercial. Impact on national, natural environment, I've already talked about, stormwater, wetlands. One thing worth mentioning is the project will be 50% solar-ready, and will contain charging stations for EV vehicles. Potential economic fiscal impact to the town, including impact on services, I've already gone through all of that, but I do want to talk about the fact that, you know, we've, we don't know what, who the user is, we know the use, so we're making estimates here, and I talk about how we came up with those estimates. But we're estimating about 21 warehouse employees per shift. We're estimating about 56 employees in the office, total 77 full-time employees that will be there during the day, that work there, per shift. We had a study done by CBR, C.B. Richard Ellis, talks about the, you know, what is the economic impact? So they gave us a list. With one year of experience in the warehouse worker, guy who drives a forklift, warehouse, materials handler, with one year of experience in the Foxborough area, maybe expect to be make between $737 and $40,000. Shipping clerk can expect to make roughly $44,000. A warehouse supervisor can make $71,000. Number of bays, truck drivers is a guess, but I'm just going to say roughly 35, 39 bays. And by going to salary.com, you can assume about a $50,000 in average salary. These are good jobs, you know, we, the stuff that you read, but I always read about the bemoaning of the fact that kids who graduate from high school that don't want to go to college, you know, can't find jobs around here nowadays because we outsourced them. So these are jobs that people who graduate from college, but don't want, graduate from high school but don't want to go to college, these are good-paying jobs for that use. They also asked C.B. Richard Ellis to look at the dense, the analysis of this use, and their analysis showed in the Metro South Route 95 area, where general industrial, which we would call this, has a 98.7% occupancy rate. So it's less than 2% open availability for this type of use. If you go to High Bay Industrial, it's 100%, there is none, and 96.7% for total industrial. Marcy talked about the average length of a lease, they use as a rule of thumb is five to seven years for a multi-tenant building, which this could be, seven to 10 years for one tenant. And then finally, the board needs to review, under the regulations, the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Use is socially and economically diviement, the use would satisfy an existing need, and the advantages of the proposal outweigh the detrimental factors. So I'm not going to go through them again, because a lot of these are repetitive. So I just, I think I've addressed them all, I'm not going to go through them again. They talk about lighting, you know, buffer screening, stormwater, jobs, taxes, all of those items. So that is, that finishes up reviewing my memo, and, you know, I just wanted to say again, it's always an issue when we have commercial against residential, but it's unavoidable. We've done as much as we, we did a lot, we did much more than is minimum requirement, but we're certainly willing to listen to, you know, tweaks and, you know, additional ideas. We're not, we're not, we don't have all the good ideas, and our team doesn't, so we'll listen to any additional comments to be made, but I think that we have met the criteria in the bylaw, and I think that this project is worthy of approval, not as is, certainly, pretty much as shown. Thank you.
Can I ask you a few questions?
Yes, sir.
So, the first one I want to know is, is a little bit about the tractor storage that you have there on the right-hand side of the plan, and why you need it, and why does it need, I think, I think you told us it was like 127 trailers last time. Why do you need it in general, and why do you need that many?
Yeah, I mean, Mike, sorry. You know, we don't know ultimately who the tenants are going to be here, but it makes the space more marketable to have that. it makes it space more marketable to have that trailer storage. That's a, because the way industrial users with the flow, you don't necessarily empty the trailer and then take it off. So it's just to have that excess availability for trailer parking helps the marketability.
Have you found in your experience that oftentimes it would be full?
Usually it's not at 100% capacity, because everyone sort of tries to work the float, et cetera. But again, it also depends upon the user. So if we have three tenants in here, one might use it and one might not need it. So it just depends.
And how many buildings of this type do you have in your portfolio right now, Marcy?
Right now, we have nothing exactly like this.
But similar.
Similar. We have industrial buildings. We have seven or eight other industrial buildings right now, in this market and outside this market.
And would you say, I mean, C.B. Richard Ellis did the employment estimate for you, would you say that that's similar to what your own experience is? I mean, I know you might have buildings that are twice the size of this, you have more employees, 100,000 feet, half the size and maybe less employees, but would you say that the number of full-time people, not people who are just driving up a truck, unloading it, somebody else comes the other side of the building, loads it up, drives it somewhere else? Full-time jobs of the type that Bill described in his memo, would you say that the C.B. Richard Ellis's analysis is similar to what you've experienced in your buildings?
Yes, it's very reflective of what we've experienced in our portfolio.
Okay. I mean, that's all I have for the moment. Does other people have questions?
I do have a question as far as hours of usage. I think that one of the major concerns of the abutters would be the overnight transition of trucks in and out. Is this something that you have looked at? Don't consider setting some sort of a guideline for hours?
Well, ideally, of course, we would like it to be a 24/7 operation. But we also recognize that there are issues there. So what are your thoughts?
Well, my biggest concern, and I'm not speaking for any of the others, just my own, would be backup alarms on the trucks after 11 o'clock at night. You're going to hear them, I don't care if you're 100 feet away or 600 feet away, you're going to hear the backup alarms. And if you're dropping trailers and recoupling, that's a fairly loud clang. So, you know, I would say maybe restricting after 11:00 PM to, say, 6:00 AM for that sort of movement would be something that I think would be possibly amenable to the neighbors.
One of the things you run into with that, and the Foxborough terminals had that issue, are trucks showing up and waiting to get in at 6:00 AM and going into the neighborhoods or idling out of facility. So it's a little bit of a balancing, because the terminals eventually got the ability to use their Route 1 side of the facility 24 hours a day. And that alleviated a lot of those problems. And especially because it was on the other side, blocked by a building, this one. But it helped it, and we actually had to do it on a one-year temporary basis. And then we had to go back in, get it approved permanently. It was a little bit of a balance.
No, I'm not suggesting that there would be no truck traffic coming in, Frank. It would be if a truck came in and then backed up to the dock, or dropped the trailer, or hooked up to a new trailer. That's all I'm suggesting, because those are very loud jarring noises. And a backup alarm, as we all know, is, you hear them from quite a distance.
How would you?
Truck movements themselves would be okay, coming in, you just don't want them to drop it?
Mm-hmm. Considering they're idling.
How would you restrict that, though? I think the only way to restrict that is to restrict hours.
Well, now, the tenant could restrict the fact that you cannot uncouple, or that you cannot back up to a dock if you have an active backup alarm.
But doesn't that, in effect, make it, you're restricting? Because what happens if somebody pulls in? They're going to just sit there until 6:00 AM and they can uncouple?
Yes. Frank, just for clarity, is there proposed to be restricted access to the site like we had at the terminals?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Is it proposed to have restricted access to the site itself like we had at the terminals?
No, we're not. I'm trying to get a clarification from Vaughn, what he was proposing, and that's what he did. He indicated that he wouldn't restrict trucks from coming in.
Correct.
Just not from dropping or backing into?
I don't think that traffic coming in would be a disturbance to anybody.
And one other thing, which was relative to commentary that we heard from people in the audience last week about the landscape plan. So most of the trees that were positioned there were deciduous trees. And the concern on their part, and I think on my part as well, is that they're beautiful during the spring and summer months, but once the autumn comes and the trees, the leaves fall off, you pretty much have tree trunks, and they're also no longer a sound buffer. So I know you said you had berms here from 7 to 15 feet. I mean, would you consider making them all 15 feet and putting, you know, like Green Giant arborvitae's or other similar type of thing that grow serious feet every year and then form basically a wall of foliage that's there all the time? It's green, it never falls off. That would help make more of a, even though you have the 100 feet, it would just make more, make more of a sound buffer and a visual buffer to the building.
Let me talk about that for a sec. And as I've discussed before, I think I talked about it, for, as, some of the berms are limited. So when you create a berm, so if you go up a foot, you're going out six.
Okay, got it.
Three and three on either end. So, well, we're trying, it's a balance. We're trying to retain as much of the additional, the existing trees that are there as possible, but also creating a berm. So, you know, I could probably create a 15-foot berm all along that west side, but there wouldn't be a tree left. I'd be clearing it right to the lot line, because you think about it, 15 feet, 45, 45, that's 90 width, plus the berm has to have a thing. That's your, remember I said it's 100 feet? There's your 100 feet. So there's no, there's nothing left. I don't think that's what.
So what are you doing about the ones that you are doing in that size?
Well, we have, like I said, it's a balancing act. We're trying, we want to create a berm, but we have to be reasonable, and we want to leave as much as we can. But I, so that's my answer on a berm, we've had that discussion before. But as far as the trees are concerned, I don't think we really care what kind of trees we put in there. I know Bill Brown would be very sad, because he did a great plan. But I think if those are the type of trees that the board has been comfortable with in previous, I know that you just went through an exercise on some, same deal, we had a commercial zone abutting a residential, and that was the decision, and that we could certainly do that. That's not an issue.
I mean, I'm less concerned, I know there was a conversation before about trees and a fence, and I'm less concerned about the idea of a fence. I'd much rather see, personally, I'd much rather see plantings that would grow to a good height and that would fill in. And if you can't have, you know, I'll accept your argument around the size and the depth of the berm, because I'm not an engineer. But I think that, you know, that would go a long way to creating a stronger buffer to the residential neighborhood than the way the original design was placed. Yeah, please.
Bill, could you, you've talked a lot about the buffer area.
Yeah.
On the bottom, but the property that's right at the end of Tucker, is that Tucker? The one that goes way down, it goes in?
This one?
Talk, give me an understanding there, because that's sticking out to me.
Okay.
It's a deep lot.
Yeah.
Are we talking about right in here?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at this right here, I'm going to zoom in even more.
Are you saying I'm blind?
So here's the finished floor of the building. This is elevation 275, 275 feet above sea level. And in this particular area, the top of the berm is about elevation 281. So that's a six-foot berm in that area there. Okay. Great. That Bill just pointed out to me, too, the grades over here, let me just point it out. Let me get my, I'll be able to measure it. So this area in here, this is about 60 feet. So that's 60 feet of existing vegetation that will remain. And as I pointed out, this 25-foot is open space part of the cluster. It's not, shouldn't be disturbed, I don't know if it is or not. But Bill just pointed out to me, over here, this area, the elevations in that area, that is a berm, that's already a natural berm, and it goes up to about elevation 292. So it's about 10 or 11 feet even higher in here than ours. And then it goes down in this direction. So that's the, that's what the buffer is there. And if you want, I can put up the, we had the rendering that we looked at.
Yeah, mine.
And maybe, Bill, you could come up and do a better job talking to them.
So Bill Brown with Brown Sardina, planners, landscape architects. I think there's a key plan.
There is.
Okay. So we did renderings from three different locations. So you can see the house, the home that you were just talking about is A, that's where that rendering is taken from. And then we've gone B, and then C, where Bill was talking about the 600-foot distance. We did renderings from there. Now, if you drive along the roadway now and look back between the homes, it's very, very dense. And it's hard to, you know, render that sort of in the proper fashion. So what we did is, we actually took a position that we didn't want to completely block everything out. But in general, what it shows is that the larger trees are the existing trees that are on site, because it actually is a very tall forest. You can't see through the forest now like you can through here. But beyond this, these larger trees, I'll use you. So these trees are shown as being existing, and again, they're more dense than they really are shown. But you can see through here, like there's the top of a pine, there's the top of the berm that's located over here that we're showing. And actually, part of this is the berm that is existing. And then beyond, there are the other trees that are beyond. Do you want to, how do you go to the next one? Advance.
And this is from the property asked about?
Yes. So this is looking at it now when it's planted. So the evergreen trees are going to be six feet high, the deciduous trees are going to be roughly 18 feet tall. And then as they grow, it's going to almost completely shield that whole area.
Can I see? I think that was A, right?
Yep. So here's B.
Okay, thank you.
So this is between two homes. There is vegetation between those homes. Again, it's hard to render it all, but you can see beyond, there are pine trees beyond, there's a smaller deciduous tree that's here. You can see them sort of beyond there. And again, you're not able, we don't think that you're going to be able to see through the forest in the, when the leaves are on the trees. And then after 10 years, roughly, this is what your view is going.
Thank you.
And then, looking at the other property, this one was hard to do, because the elevation of the home is actually down, I think, roughly 160 in that range. You know, the billing elevation is at 175. The topography raises up to, excuse me, 2.
260.
Yeah, it goes up to 290. So again, you can see a little peak through here, that's where the building is as you're looking up the hill. Trees are in the background, and then the next rendering shows that 10-year growth, you really don't see that much through there.
Thank you.
Excuse me, do you happen to know the approximate elevation of that first house in View A?
The best I could see, there's actually a spot elevation on the, on the survey right close to the house, it's 269.
Okay, and then that berm comes up?
Then the berm goes up to...
The natural topography goes to 290, and then it goes back down, and then we have
our berm.
Okay.
Towards the building. Now, I don't know what the finished floor elevation is of the building, if the finished floor is higher. But the elevation outside is roughly 260.
Anybody else have any questions? In a moment from the board?
What's the floor height of the building?
Finished floor of the, the building is 275. Like, one of the things that I didn't point out, and I'm sorry, is attached to my, to our memo, was we put some draft conditions of approval. And the way we did it is, we looked at all of the other recent approvals that the town has considered, and then put them in there, and then modified or added some to address some of the issues that we did. And it's just for discussion purposes, of course, you know, the board makes decisions. But these are just some of the items, you know, things to talk about, lighting and sound, signage, you know, 24-hour call line, screening, loading docks can't be used unless there's a hydraulic leveler, so they're not going bang, bang, bang. Dock seals have to be in place. Loading docks have to be kept closed overnight when there's no trailer in front of them. The normal condition on board lighting that we put into all of them. So just some things to think about and consider. We certainly don't expect to have that whole discussion tonight, but just to start the discussion.
And some of those that Bill just went over, some of the ones that were added to the Foxborough terminals changing hours, especially the hydraulic levelers and docks, were an issue with the drive-in. We discussed, we got the Ken, you know, without any active loading dock.
So Paige, can I ask you a question? So there's this comment, and it's not commentary here, but it's one of the things that we're supposed to determine, and there's the, the use is socially and economically desirable. So a lot of what we talk about is the economic desirability. I'm not quite sure I understand how we apply the social, the socially desirability, and not just on this building, but on uses in that zone.
Yeah, it's a tough one. I mean, it's up to the board to figure that out, unfortunately. I mean, you have to apply your best judgment, and it could change from time to time. I mean, who know what was intended when it was put into place, but you have to weigh it in that respect. No black and white on that one.
Just employment, that's all. That'd be as close as you can go.
Well, and, you know, I appreciate the salary information on the truckers, but the truckers...
Well, no, it's not the truckers, it's the warehouse employees.
And how many is there estimated?
Truckers?
No, no. The employees, the internal employees.
Because the truckers are going to come from elsewhere, so the chances that they're going to... going to employ local...
Right. We use 21. And here's how I came up with that number.
And then, that's per shift.
Right.
So if there's only one shift, it'll be 21. But the equation puts the Foxborough terminals, times three shifts only, could be 21 times three.
Really pushing the Foxborough terminals, aren't you?
Well, that's the only one I really know of. But the office workers wouldn't change that. They'd use one shift.
Right.
And we just, and again, we're just roughly estimating one worker per 10,000 square feet of space. So, you know, it could be more, probably not less. But that's kind of what I use as a rule of thumb. Excuse me, because I need to know that number when I'm designing a septic system. A septic system designed for a warehouse is based on the number of employees. So I've just used that number, and it's been pretty good over the years.
Anything else from the board? No? Then I will open it up to people in the audience. If you have a question or a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. One thing I will say is, I don't really want to... We do not really want to entertain any more conversations about traffic. We have beaten that horse to death. Everyone knows that traffic is a major component. So we don't need to hear again about people's perspective that there's going to be a lot of cars going down Beach Street or North Street. It's a top priority, awareness of the board. We all know about that. So I'm going to ask you, if those are your comments, we don't need to hear them anymore. We know that that's an issue. If you have other things you'd like to talk about relative to what you've just heard, or things that we haven't covered, I'm more than happy to entertain it.
And I'll just be upfront, we're not taking a vote tonight. I'm almost certain. So, and we do have to be out of here by 10 o'clock. Because of, we need to exit the building by then, so...
It's after my bedtime.
There we go.
It's past my bedtime, I'm so there for you, sir.
So just say your name and address.
I was going to talk on the traffic type things, presenting stuff based on what I printed out, based on their report.
Can you just tell me your name and address?
Pardon?
Your name and address.
Oh, Bob Thorcel, 4 Willis Lane, Foxborough, Mass.
Thank you.
I've been in town here for over 50 years. My wife will probably shoot me after this. And right now, there's two warehouses down the end of the street, and when you just turn into Beach Street, the lights from them are ridiculous to begin with. And from what I understand, they were supposed to put up barriers to, you know, freeze and whatever it may be to eliminate that for the neighbors down there. It doesn't bother me. I'm up the far end, you know, at the beginning, right in the corner. So that doesn't bother me, but it's horrendous, really.
You're talking about Panis Road, sir?
Pardon?
Warehouses on Panis Road?
I don't understand. It's right on Willis Street, Willis Lane, right down the end of those two warehouses.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to get Clyde, just wanted to clarify.
I don't know where they are, yeah. But you can see them right, Dmitri's.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So most of the conversations associated with the traffic impact that I've seen have been associated with Route 1. Okay? As far as all the vehicles that are going to be going are basically on Route 1, traffic, trucks and whatever it may be. Okay? My question is, what's the quantity of vehicles to and from Route 1 versus 95 to the site? Okay? I look at it, majority of vehicles are going to be coming from 95 to get to that site. Okay? Per their traffic study, impact study, passenger vehicles to and from, 15% from the north. That's passenger vehicles. 45% from North Street, 35% from the south. So 45% was the highest number of vehicles, passenger vehicles, going to the site per... Unless I misunderstood read their numbers, okay? Where are these vehicles coming from, or how do they get to North Street to get to the site? Okay? They coming from Beach Street? They coming from where? I don't know. Okay? Heavy vehicles, okay, to and from, 80% are coming from the north. Okay? 20% from the south. That's the big vehicles we're worried about, basically. If they're coming from the north, okay, majority of heavy vehicles from the north, from the north, GPS will direct them, heavy vehicles down Route 95, there's no question, okay, of that, to Mechanic Street, to Beach Street, to eliminate the U-turn that they have to make on Route 1. Okay? Weekday passenger vehicles, I don't know what this peak hour is, but morning 35 in, 35 out. Afternoon 37 in, 13 out. Heavy vehicles, morning 10 in, 10 out. Afternoon 6 in, 7 out. It says peak hour, does that mean that's the high number?
That's the most intense traffic is peak hour.
But how many... That doesn't say the whole day. Okay? And then I look in there, and maybe I read it wrong, but I don't see anything about overnight vehicles in and out. You know, it says morning and afternoon. Okay? So, you know, vehicles over two and a half ton are prohibited between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM on North Street and Beach Street right now. Okay? This means a majority of heavy vehicles will be coming and going to the site between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Okay? Which is when most people are going to be out walking the roads. They're not out at 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Okay? And that's what, one of the concerns was, I think. Okay? So, I mean, you know, and they're going to be using, if they're coming from that area, they're going to be using North Street and Beach Street during the day.
But if you heard the applicant today...
I know he said something about, I could barely hear, I mean...
What he was saying was, is that more than the restriction that's in place right now, that they are willing to write the document and have the town apply to the state to make those streets completely banned.
Yes, if it happens. I agree. I heard that comment.
Okay.
Okay, all I'm trying to say, that's if. Okay?
Fair enough.
Okay? I mean, right now, we're talking about today, not, you know, six months, a year from now, or maybe never. Okay? So, I mean, that's the main concern as far as I'm concerned.
I understand. And we get that. We know that that's the main concern, is traffic. Okay.
That's it.
Thank you for your input.
Bob Kaufman, 187 Beach Street. I'll try and make it not traffic-related, but first question, there's a stadium advisory board that votes on concerts and votes on and approves anything that's happening event related at the stadium. Have they been involved, do they need to be involved in this process at all? Because we're talking about turnarounds at the stadium off of Route 1. So I'd more curiosity, not so much about the level of traffic, but do they need to...
Well, I don't see how they would be involved because the turnaround at the stadium is a state highway. They cannot restrict that.
And that's my question. I didn't know if they needed to be involved. The other thing is more of a, I guess, semantics, but, you know, being with a project background, when I think about a project that I'm going to undertake, I always list the pros and the cons. And I've heard, you know, and Mr. Buckley addressed some of the concerns that they have, I think, pretty well tonight. You know, they lay out what their pros and cons are. What are the pros and cons for the people in Foxborough? And I've heard a lot of cons, but I haven't heard a pro. And I'm wondering what you guys think. Is there a pro for the people that live in Foxborough, having a 250,000-square-foot warehouse there with extra traffic, extra noise, so on and so forth? And I don't know, I can't think of a positive, and I'm asking you if you can.
I'm sure that we can, but I'm not sure we're ready to project what those are. And that, and even though there may be some pros that the board sees, the cons may outweigh it, or the pros may outweigh it.
Other than tax revenue? I mean, I know that's going to increase, but other than that...
The economic thing is definitely a part of it. But we have to take a look at the overall project, and we definitely have to do our best to make sure that even if it goes through, that we do, that we take steps to protect the neighborhood. So I'm not sure that we will get there. I don't know where the board is, we haven't discussed it either in public or privately.
My biggest concern is, I want to make sure that you guys can actually lay... And I don't know enough about what you do, so I'm not trying to be insulting, I'm just trying to understand the process.
No, you're not being insulting at all, you're just trying to understand the process.
I just want to know that there's someone putting together a list that says, here's five pros and 10,000 cons, or vice versa.
That list will come out, there's no question about it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Johnny Katani, 7 Willis Lane. Not that, I know we're not able to talk about traffic, but 5:30 this morning, three trucks come from north up Beach at 5:30 this morning, went right through the sign.
What do you mean, the sign?
The sign, that Mr. Gallagher put up on the end of Beach and Mechanic, and Beach and North. And right in the middle of the reservoir estates there, there's one there. First of all, I think those signs should be bigger, the paint should be bolder, they should be reflective, and let them know that they're not supposed to come down the road. June 1st, quarter run in the morning, I hear a diesel coming down Willis Lane. Wakes me up, I look out, 52-foot trailer, big white semi, goes all the way down the end. From what I understand, his GPS let him down Willis. He was supposed to go to IDI. So he was supposed to stay on Beach according to his GPS, but he went all the way, all the way down to Willis, straight down, no way in the world he's going to turn around. So he had a backup, Foxborough Police came, escorted him out, took out a mailbox on the corner, and left. The girl, the woman that lives in the corner told me last Sunday, her mailbox got wiped out. Sunday afternoon, I saw four families with three kids going down Beach.
You can keep telling me this all you want, but we've had this discussion ad infinitum. This is not new.
Kevin, don't you think traffic is the main cause here?
It is a major issue, and we know it's a major issue.
I think we should be talking about it, Kevin. Just this morning, I told you, three trucks come right through the sign. Right through the sign. I had to pull over in front of Kyle Congdon's house, as far as I could get over to let him through.
We will let, we will let the highway department know that that happened, that there's still a need for a larger sign. We will do that for you. But all I can say is, you continuing to badger us about the traffic issue is unnecessary because we know it's the top priority.
All right, then let's get into noise, Kevin. Let's get into noise.
Go ahead.
3:20 this morning, 3:20 every morning, boom, bang, boom. Right down the end of Willis. Though I don't need an alarm clock, I'm so used to it now. What's it going to be when this goes 24/7? There's going to be Kooplin at 3 o'clock in the morning, you know that.
How close is your house to Panis Road? How close is it?
Very close.
Okay.
Very close.
They're saying that the closest is going to be...
Do you know where next house is, Kevin, at the end of Willis?
No, I don't.
Okay, go down Willis, come down my house, I'll give you an escort. I'll bring you right down there, we'll take a walk around the whole area, and I'll show you.
I'd be happy to do it.
Come Sunday. Come Saturday, I got to work Saturday, Kevin, but come Sunday morning, seriously, 9 o'clock, and I'll take you down, and you and me will take a walk. And I'll get recordings, too. I'll get recordings. 3:20, bang, bang, bang. Whistles backing up, like this gentleman said here, whistles all the time.
John, is the fact that there's going to be noise during late hours of the night, that needs to be addressed.
Can I ask one thing? Where's the Foxborough Economic Team for Route 1? Where were they? I thought they'd be here showing up for every meeting. Put a nice restaurant or something in there to accommodate the stadium and dress up Route 1. We don't need another warehouse on Route 1. The economy's failing, this place will go stagnant, then that, then it's going to sit there. Put something in there that's going to work.
The restaurant went stagnant, John. The restaurant went out of business.
Well, Kevin, that's been there for 50 years, it's worn out, it's welcome. Put something new. Put something vibrant for the young folk. Get them out of Patriot Place and put them in, put them in there, too. Break it up a little bit, do something.
You serious? You want a nightclub right there?
Why not? There was nightclub, you remember Dmitri's, the Red Snapper? That was the hottest spot around.
Yeah, I know. And it was, but it's not.
It was. Kevin, I think you got to, you know, are we going to get to... Kevin, one question, how long, how much more are we going to continue this?
Till we make a decision.
So this could go on to the fall, because a lot of people are on vacation, Kevin.
I doubt highly that it's going to go to the fall.
You think so, Kevin? No, seriously, because I think a lot of people are on vacation that can't make it. This place be flooded if everybody knew what was going on in Beach, north, the side streets.
We haven't been hiding it under a rock, John.
No, 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 I know I haven't said that, Kevin. I'm just saying that there's, I think, to be a lot more people here. We're in the middle of July here. People had plans back in, you know, they made plans back in the winter to go away this month. It's a vacation month. I think we should postpone the whole thing and come back right after Labor Day. That's my opinion.
Well, but you know what? We don't get to control that entirely because the applicant...
No, I know, I know. I know you want to get it up and going.
No, they have rights as well, and that's so we...
No, you're right, they got rights, they stated their case.
We're trying to hold the...
I've heard the... Kevin, one more quick question, sir, Mr. Buckley. When I got my abutist notice, right, it said 380,000-square-foot warehouse on my invitation to the abutist notice in April. Now it's down to 240, why? What, from 380 to 240?
Well, it's 225.
225. Why was it stated 380 on my envelope?
Does it matter?
Yes, it does. It's a monster, it's another three times as high.
Well, wait a second, he reduced it by 30%. Why are you upset?
I'm just saying, why now is it 240, when it was stated 380 at the beginning?
Maybe it had to do with the size of the lot, maybe it had to do with the type of use they wanted to do.
Well, they should have brought it up, saying it was knocked down to 240. That's still large. The trees ain't going to do nothing. The whistles will go right through the trees, the trees can grow another 50 years, those whistles, they echo the whole neighborhood. The backup whistles, the clang and the Kooplin and everything else. I'm used to it, because I grew up on Spring Street in Dedham, I told you that. I heard it all the time, you know? And the exhaust, you got to think of the exhaust, everything else. That northeast wind's blowing, coming up Willis, that's, I can hear the stadium noise like I'm sitting there, too. When that wind's blowing right, you can hear everything. It's going to, that's why I hear everything in the morning, when that wind is really I appreciate your time, thank you.
No, thank you.
Good evening. Devin Kaludi for 15 Willis Lane. Well, that truck parked in front of my house for about a half hour and just sat there until he didn't know what to do.
The one he was just talking about?
Yes. And I have video of it. I'll send it to you guys later if you want to review it. But he's there, and he's backing up, and he's backing on my property, and backing on the other side of my property. Then he hits the neighbor's mailbox, and I know the police were there because I had called them to come there to help him. And I think the lady actually reported it to the police two days ago, I actually heard it over the radio, but it's just, you got to think about what's going to happen, okay? You can make all the regulations and all the, you know, rules you want, but you're going to have a trucker that's going to come from Alabama or Minnesota that doesn't care. He's going to follow that GPS, because that's what his company told him to do, and he's going to end up stuck in a situation. And now he's backing over people's mailboxes, and he's backing up streets that are too narrow for a truck to go down. Even the height over there isn't good enough. On Beach Street, the same problem. And we all, and let's think about reality for a second here, because you know this is what's going to happen, because that's how life works. Okay? People are gonna follow the machine because that's what's going to tell them what to do, and that's what they're expected of by their employer. And they don't know the regulation of this local warehouse, maybe. The guy told me he's never even been here before. And I said, what, you can't read a sign that says dead end? Why would you even attempt to do something like that? You're driving something that's 110 feet long. It's silly. So, I mean, you got to really think hard before you guys make a decision on this, okay? Because, you know, these people only care about making their next dollar. They don't care about the economy of this town. He was talking about wages, about people that work at a warehouse. In this economy, and this, the way this country is right now, how is $37,000 a year In this economy, and this, the way this country is right now, how is $37,000 a year a living wage to live anywhere around this area? And you know it's not gonna happen. All these people are gonna be coming in from Rhode Island, because that's where living is cheap, they're gonna be paying their income tax, Rhode Island, and it's not gonna benefit the town a damn thing, okay? So think about that real hard. Your sustainable job is working in a warehouse because you didn't decide to go to college? I didn't go to college, and I run a power washing business that makes over $100,000 a year, okay? So don't tell me that I'm gonna be stuck in a warehouse, or anybody else like that, not at 37, 40,000 or even 50,000 dollars a year, is not enough to live in this town and own a home, okay? So if you think that's a, you know, viable wage for this economy and the state of this world, then you people are out of your mind, and you should check your, maybe you wanna give some money to those people, 'cause I'm sure you all have plenty. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
I just wanna remind people, I appreciate traffic is the hot topic, we get it, and berating us on whether it's traffic or another matter, we are not sitting here wholeheartedly in support of this, we're asking questions, we're doing the pro and con list. Understand that we are, we're not saying we're for this. And so, I just wanna remind people, nothing about traffic, nothing about 18-wheelers, nothing about mailboxes being hit down, we totally get it, and I would just ask, just as a fellow resident, please stop berating us.
And then?
I don't feel you guys are being berated, I think people need to beat this into our heads, so you know what the concerns...
I have to be beat in the head?
Yes, because people like this do not care. Okay, you don't live in our neighborhood, you don't have to deal with this, so that's the end of it, okay? And be honest about it, you're sick and tired of hearing it.
No, it's not that we're sick and tired of hearing it.
That's what she just said, and we're not berating you about traffic, we're making sure that you understand...
But you're being impolite, sir. You're being impolite.
I understand that.
And I, and I, and I said that if you can't, if people can't control themselves, they'll be asked to leave.
I'm being controlled, but I'm just trying to say that we're saying, we're gonna bring the concerns to you that are dear to us.
That's fine, but you can do it in a civil way, and you don't have to raise your voice.
Well, I'm not on the microphone, I wanna make sure everybody can hear. Hang on. Kevin, this is all part of the heart, you gotta be...
No, we do get it, we do get it, but you don't have to keep repeating the same things over and over, presuming that we're stupid.
You let it present three times in a row for two hours, Kevin. With the same nonsense. With the same stuff.
It's not all the same stuff.
He brought, he brought three more, uh, uh, company, company, three more, uh, people with him tonight. Well, honestly, Bill hasn't even had the heat, he didn't even look in the direction of the audience the entire time, people were asking questions, he just gets forward like a robot. I don't understand why you can't, you know, at least everybody else on the panel...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Do you have a question, sir?
I, I do.
Please, please ask it.
I got a couple.
Just state your name and address.
My name's Bob Dougherty, I live at 53 Beach Street.
Thank you.
And it's not all traffic, but I did just listen for like 28 minutes of trees. Again, in the 10-year, I saw the same photos, so it is repetitive, and I think the whole thing here is the traffic, I mean, I'm not gonna get into anything like that, the whole thing is the traffic, so we don't need to talk about trees, water runoff, or any of that stuff, if we don't put a building in there like that, it, it's like we're putting a cat before the horse. I do have a request, and I think, I think it's something we should do. I request a peer review to review the applicant studies on their traffic study. They did a traffic study. They did the traffic study. We would like our own traffic study.
We, we have one, we, we had our consultant do it.
Our own consultant.
Yes, our own consultant.
But that was done like months ago, and I think it was done on a Saturday.
I don't think so. Our, our, our consultant reviewed their results and has his own perspective on it.
Okay, and another question, how many special permits are they, are you guys asking for?
It's one special permit.
I thought, is there one for the wetlands?
The height and the use.
The height and use, I'm sorry.
The height, use, and is a 24/7, is that a special permit?
No, that's not a special permit.
Okay, all right, so there's two special permits that we're looking for. I'm just, these are just questions I just had for myself, and I guess one of them I had was, did anybody notify the stadium, is Robert Kraft will be all right with their turnaround in there, but I guess you said it doesn't matter to him?
No, it doesn't, it's not that it doesn't matter to him, it is a state highway, it does not belong to him.
I did raise that question when they talked about the traffic routes at the last meeting, and I was pointing out to me very clearly, that is a state mandated jug handling, run by the state, not by the government.
Okay, and is there any guarantees, like that, you know, that, like, we have signs there or whatever, but they, they just get run over, and, and say they do see a sign, you know, all right, we got the signs, they come to Beach Street, we can't take a right up Beach Street, so they're gonna go to where? Alice Bradley? Right, cut through there, and then there's no sign, or we could put a sign at Alice Bradley, and then they're gonna go to Chestnut Street, which leaves them, or we could put a sign at Chestnut Street, too, and then they're in the center, Foxborough. I mean, I can't even drive my little box truck around Foxborough Center, never mind sending the, you know? I mean, it's just, it's just something that's really not gonna work for trucks and whatever, and you know, whatever, a couple other tractor trailers, whatever, I'm not supposed to say that word, but there's probably other vehicles, too, like smaller six-wheelers, eight-wheelers, you know, I don't know if, like, I'm just, in my head, I'm just thinking like a FedEx or an Amazon, or UPS, or, you know, up and down the street, and it's just, it's, it's not that, you know, like, you guys are supposed to be for us, like, like...
We try it.
I, I, I know, and, and I like that, you know, but I really want you guys to actually put you for us, 'cause there's this one guy that's gonna get rich here, that doesn't even live in this town, he has nothing to do with this town, he don't care about this town. Once this project's done, Mr. Buckley's not gonna be able to control the traffic, he's not gonna, you know, he's, he's got a lot of good stuff to say, I mean, it sounded great, the trees, the 10-year plan, the, all the employment, the, you know, he's actually gonna make the wetlands, but everything's gonna be, it's gonna be way better than, you know, it, it...
It's not that it's way better, but some of those questions were requested by the board.
Okay, all right.
Because, you know, because, you know, we heard clearly in previous meetings, people saying, "Big deal, they're gonna get a tax payment." So I was one of the people who requested that information from the applicant to say, "Okay, how many real jobs are you gonna provide? What kind of jobs are they? How much money will people be able to earn in a warehouse?"
It wouldn't be enough to...
I'm not saying, I, I'm not making a judgment right now about whether it's enough or not, but I think we needed to know how many employees they could put in there, what kind of jobs are they, what kind of income can we expect those people to, to get? Do I expect that they'll all be Foxborough residents? Absolutely not. But some, some maybe, and I think it's, it's important that we just have an idea of what the economic benefit is besides a quarterly tax payment. We all make a quarterly tax payment.
Right. I have a painting company, I've, I've had an ad for a painter for eight months, I can't get anybody. Anybody knows, right, you can't get workers right now. Uh, so workers, that's, that's not gonna be the issue, and I think why we're frustrated is because, honestly, we're all at your mercy. Like, you guys are gonna either push this through, or you guys are gonna stop it. And, 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 and it's frustrating not to have control over that, 'cause we all live there, you guys really don't live there. This is like our area, and, and we're counting on you, I mean, it's, it's, it's you guys.
We understand that, we do.
All right, let's, then, let's hope you guys make the right choice, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, that guy could, there's plenty of other places, and there's plenty of other things that can go there. My last thing is, I was rocking my brain to see, to think, like, what possibly could be a worse project than that? Like, like, did a 24/7 trucking company in and out, you know, and I came up with maybe a prison? Maybe? No, like, can anybody up there, like, tell me right this second, a worse project than that?
I can't tell you, I can't, I can't tell you a worse project, but I can tell you this, the history of the neighborhood, you know, even before Tucker Lane and Pickering Circle, of Beach Street and Meadowview Road, have been consistently unhappy with everything. And, and when I say everything, I mean on that specific site. When Dimitri wanted to expand his business, people like you came and protested it. When the Funway came, people like you came, I'm not saying this group, but people like you came and protested it, so...
If you drive down Willis Lane, you'll see why.
Well, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about Panus, I'm not talking about the warehouse side, I'm talking about just when he wanted to expand the restaurant and do the wedding mill. People protested about it. People protested about Mike Katachi doing the Funway. People protested about the golf, the, the people hitting golf balls there, so...
And this is like 10 times worse than that, though, you gotta admit.
Well, I'm not, I'm not making a judgment about your, your ability to say it's better or worse, I'm just pointing out, it's like, in many cases, not just for this, sometimes people in a neighborhood, I'll give you a perfect example, how many people here live on Tucker Lane or Pickering Circle?
Who was the question?
How many people here live on Pickering Lane or Tucker, or Tucker?
I live on Tucker Lane.
Okay, you live on Tucker, you take, you live on Tucker Lane, turn around and look at your neighbors from Meadowview, who hated that idea, who hated that subdivision.
I got a ticket.
No, no, well, not everybody did, not everybody did, there were definitely neighbors there who came to us and did not want us to allow that. But now, but now, there are people there who have homes, and now you're neighbors.
Do you compare apples to apples?
I'm not comparing apples, I'm just pointing out that, I'm pointing out that oftentimes people have perspective about anything, including homes, including entertainment venues, including restaurants, and now including this. So I'm not making a judgment that this is good or evil, and I'm not saying you guys don't, aren't entitled to your perspective, you certainly are, and the traffic is a major concern, and the, the closeness of the project to your homes is a major concern, and we hear you, but give us an opportunity to hear them out fairly, and hear you out fairly, and make decisions about whether it'll go at all, or if it will go with conditions that will be as best we can make them. And we haven't come to that conclusion yet.
This is what scares us, though, when we hear you kinda talk to us like that, like, that's scary, because that means you kinda, it could kinda, yeah, it's kinda...
No, we're not on any side, I'm not on, I have not, I can tell you that I have not made up my mind at all about this, and that we've had no discussions publicly or privately amongst each other about how we each feel. We don't do that, that's a public meeting issue, we're, we're here listening to...
We're counting on you, that's all we're saying.
I hear you, and I understand, and I think we all understand.
My last comment...
Yes.
Is 102 feet, the average car, I Googled it when I was there, is 14.7, so when we're leaving this parking lot, seven cars, and your seven cars, which is probably from, you know, that's 102 feet, it's really not that far.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify for this gentleman, that there was a revised traffic study submitted, it has been updated, and our peer review consultant is reviewing it. So no comment needed, just saying we are on it, and I would also just like to say that I think the reason why you're hearing this from the board is you're treating them rather terribly. They haven't made a decision, so there's, there's a loss of civility here that's hard to watch, so, just, okay? Can we just talk? Okay? Do you want?
No, because, you know, they come in here and they address us like children, don't say anything, we'll probably...
No, just don't yell at us.
Breathe in and out.
You can talk, you can talk to us.
You know what, unfortunately, perception is reality right now.
You can, you can talk to us, you don't have to yell at us.
I'm Michelle Paluzzi for Tucker Lane, I'd like to bring my iPhone around my neighborhood and post it up there to give you guys an accurate view of what Tucker Lane looks like, looking up at the proposed property, but that's not what I came up here to say. I'm gonna cover two points that I brought up last meeting, and then I'm gonna cover my few pages with thoughts about, for tonight. Last meeting, I brought up the trucker GPS system that had truckers coming from the south, heading off of 95 to Mechanic Street, down Beach Street. Just wanted to make a note that if a trucker did abide by the sign that says "No trucks allowed," to reroute, they have them going straight down Mechanic Street, taking a right onto Chestnut, into the Rotary, taking a right onto North Street, and we all know that an 18-wheeler going that way would just be its own set of problems. We're dealing with the private real estate equity firm right now, who is not in the business of losing money, and they're in the business of making a lot of money, and they're not gonna put millions of dollars into a developed potential property without a potential applicant. I know they've stated that nobody has signed the lease, my last, the last meeting I asked if they had a potential applicant, and it was also asked if they had built a similar facility like this, who's rented it, and where it was located, and I didn't know if the planning board received any answers to those questions.
She answered this evening, didn't she?
About what?
Okay, I can go, I'm sorry?
I, I thought Marcy answered that this... She addressed that this evening.
So was one of those projects by chance located in San Jose?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Yes, she said that they're, they're from Boston down to Mid-Atlantic, so Washington, DC.
And did you answer the question, Marcy, regarding a potential applicant? I know nobody signed on the dotted line, but I also know you're not gonna go into this without a potential person.
We are going into this without a potential tenant.
Or numerous potential tenants?
We have, we have not, we're not in any kind of discussions with any potential tenants at this point.
Anybody at all? Okay, thank you. So you're stating that this is gonna be a warehouse type, just, I'm just, once again, perception's reality, so I listened to what you said, and you made it sound like it was gonna be like an e-commerce type of warehouse facility, not Amazon, because that, at this point, could be Walmart, it could be Target, it could be Shift, it could be anything. But what I want this board to understand is that under e-commerce warehouses is something called a last-mile delivery center. The last-mile delivery center, for those who don't know, is different than a traditional warehouse, it requires 24-hour, seven-day-a-week access, plenty of loading docks, numerous parking spaces, increased ceiling heights in the buildings to stock items. Recently, they are being built closer to residential areas, because the purpose is short-term storage for goods that can be delivered within a quick amount of time. I am also curious if this is the type of usage that has been considered for this property, because if it has, a typical day in a last-mile delivery warehouse begins in the middle of the night, with a tractor-trailer bringing packages in bulk from fulfillment centers, then they're packed into delivery vans, and those vans are all, you know, 'cause their routes are already scheduled, they are shut out during the day at different times, so usually don't leave during peak traffic hours. What we haven't, what hasn't been brought up is the fact that when these third-party, excuse me, when these e-commerce warehouses get very busy, I'm just gonna use Amazon as an example, I know it's been stated that it's not Amazon, third-party delivery service partners are brought in, or on-call drivers who use their own personal vehicles to deliver items have brought, brought in. So even though we're saying that trucks, and whatever your definition of a truck may be, can go down North Street, down Beach Street, we're still looking at a lot of personal vehicles, and, you know, in a high increase of vehicles on our local traffic.
Can I interrupt you for one sec?
Yeah, sure.
Do you see Amazon trucks on your road now? Do you see people getting deliveries right now in your home?
Yeah, I do, and I also see them stopping traffic on Beach Street, because I can't go around them, so it, it is, you know what? You know what, and I'm not gonna, I'm not being disrespectful...
No, I know you're not.
No, I know, but, but your tone, it's, I'm just gonna relay, it's the tone, it's very condescending.
I apologize.
And that's, that's the problem.
That wasn't intended, that wasn't intended. I was just really curious to see if you see that in your...
I do, I see that, I see white, I have my daughter yell every time she sees a white van, 'cause she thinks she's gonna be abducted, because that's all we see. You know, I see trucks of all sorts that I don't, I also had somebody deliver yesterday in a Ford Escort. I didn't know who was coming to my front door, but that traffic was increased down Beach Street. The Institute of Traffic Engineers has a TRIP generation manual, which is the go-to for estimating traffic park, patterns for warehouse and industrial parks. I'm assuming that's what was used in this instance when it came to this project, and because if so, it does not include any type of method that directly applies to last-mile delivery centers, and what should incur if this happens to be a last-mile delivery center is that data from similar e-commerce facilities, as a site plan, I'm sorry, I can't read all my writing, I was scribbling, as a planned review, and then conduct traffic counts once that facility is operational to determine traffic patterns. This is once again a perfect example of why the vagueness of what is going into this site needs to be, that question needs to be answered, because if it is a last-mile delivery center, then the, the study that they did, the traffic study, is not, is not accurate for the need. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, did a 64-page study of the hidden and plain site impacts of e-commerce warehouses. They are willing to be a resource to any community who possibly has this coming into their community. In this study, they noted a couple of, well, they noted 64 pages of recommendations, but two of them was to ban on and off-site idling for facility-related vehicles. And then the other one is that since mostly 18-wheelers are the same ones coming to a facility, that those trucks should be registered in the same town that the facility is so the town can access excise taxes on them. I'm paying to have a car in my driveway, so shouldn't they? With that being said, with that being said, what hasn't been brought up is with these large vehicles coming is if you look down, look up and down Route 1, there's not one gas facility that can accommodate an 18-wheeler height-wise. So are we looking down the line that you're going to be asking to put fuel pumps in there? Because the only one I can think of off the top of my head is across from, down Route 1 before Luciano's. There's nothing on Route 1. And there's nothing on Route 1 that can handle any 18-wheelers that need to be done. So I'm going to end with a few more points. I am really hoping this planning board learns from other towns in Braintree, and once again, I'm going to use Amazon a few years ago. Braintree, Amazon halted plans to build a 250,000-square-foot last mile delivery center and they halted those plans because the town officials required contracted drivers to put signs on their vehicles. This was to help officials track traffic generated by those runs. Amazon pulled out of that. What's going on in Denham? I would ask you to reach out to the Denham Planning Board. In 2016, Amazon came in. As of 2020, the town of Denham has been fighting the 232,500-square expansion that Amazon wanted to do. Complaints from tractor-trailer speeding past houses, hitting curbs, jumping rotaries, all this stuff, yeah, taking down wires, all this stuff was happening. So I'm asking you to reach out to them. And I'll just end with this, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of you up there. I get it, you live in this town and I get that this is a heated discussion, but here's the thing, hundreds of us moved into this town, I'll talk myself, 2001. I knew Gillette Stadium was there. I know the stadium was there. My house value was determined, maybe fluctuated a little bit here or there, depending on what went up there. I see my friends having to move out of this town because this town is becoming a very expensive place to live. It is unfair for us who are staying in this town, trying to get our kids through the school system, to have something put up in this property that is going to decrease the value of our homes. And nobody should have to work and, you know, work and live paycheck to paycheck to stay in their house just to turn around and sell it for a much lower value than it's worth. And you know what? That's a huge responsibility. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm a lot shorter than most people. Danielle Retsch, 138 Beach Street. I had submitted a letter prior, for the prior meeting with a bunch of questions. I will not ask a traffic question out of respect. One of the things I did want to ask the planning board is in May 2016, the planning board limited hours of trucking operations to WFM Enterprises when they were building their, their site in town. And I was wondering, would the planning board also look at limiting hours for operation? Again, understanding that the DOT and all of these things, you know, these trucks have safety equipment and they have these safety backups and those are not things that you can shut off. But they are things that no matter what you do, unless you put a giant sound dome, we're going to hear them. I hear the road, I hear the trucks on Panis Road and I live on Beach Street, right at the, you know, Willis and Beach. And I hear those trucks, especially when they're dropping, making booming noises. The other question that I would like to ask again to the planning board is considering if this is decided to go through and having conditions, I appreciate that the developers said they would do the paperwork to do a truck exclusion 24 hours a day, but we can't control the amount of commuters that would use Beach Street or Meadowview or North Street. But is there a way that there can be a condition written that the developer needs to help fund traffic calming? So on those streets to help us maintain safe roads that we as residents can use as we're walking our dogs, as people are riding bikes, people use, any day of the week, you're seeing people use Beach Street. I don't know, I don't know how many people ride their bikes up and down. I walk my dogs. I see people walking their dogs, children on bicycles and playing and all these things. And I think if there is measures done to ensure pedestrian safety, putting in the crosswalks again, you know, which are things that I know have nothing to do with this project or this proposal, things that have to be addressed with the DPW.
Yeah, we have to address it.
But if there's a way that, you know, we can have that support.
When you think of, when you think of traffic calming, are you thinking about like the kind of humps that are on North Street or Pace and Road?
I'm thinking of those specifically. I'm also thinking of road narrowing and correctly striping the streets. So depending on how the Mass GIS system actually classifies the roads, there's also, that ties into how they should be striped, how wide the street should be. And if, if you can actually paint the striping accordingly, you can actually narrow the road that would give that illusion of the road narrowing and therefore having the driver slow down. But the most effective things are usually those speed humps, which are not at all a problem for anybody who plows that uses two brain cells to plow. You know, it's not, it's not, it's not an impediment to plowing. So those are, those are the things that I would ask the planning board to look at besides all of the other questions that I know that I submitted and the concerns that I submitted. And I do appreciate the time that you guys are taking and understand that everyone is concerned and there is a way to do this respectfully on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Hamilton, 6 Willis Lane. Just a question, I just want to be clear on one thing. Mr. Buckley, you're from Bay Colony Group?
Yes.
And did Bay Colony Group do Panis Road? I know I've referenced Panis Road a lot. Was Bay Colony Group involved in Panis Road?
You can answer the question.
Yes. So I guess my, my question is, I wanted to verify that because it says on the Bay Colony Group website in regards to the Panis Road project. The site is also bordered by a very active community group and addressing their concerns concerning drainage, noise and light was key to garnering the support of the town boards. So it's, it's an advertisement for the wonderful work you did and yet it's been held up as a debacle for everybody who lives in and around that area. So I'm, I'm having trouble, I guess, understanding why we should believe what you're saying. Because the outcome doesn't seem to match what I'm sure was said to the planning board when Panis Road was being planned, right? I don't know who was on this board at that time, but my guess is it was the same sort of stuff, trees and lights will be good and no traffic and we now live with the result, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Bay Colony, Mr. Buckley's presentation sees him. If this gentleman had any questions on the project, I'd be more than willing to answer them, but I don't think we have to sit here and have him talk about Bay Colony or Buckley this time.
Well, I will say this, the mission, if I understand it correctly, of the planning board, right, is to ensure the orderly and sustainable future of the town. Is that accurate?
Well, in this particular case it is. It also has to do with, you know, housing developments, all kinds of other things.
Right. But in this case?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes, it has to meet, it has to meet certain criteria, like the ones we talked about, socially and economically, et cetera.
Okay.
So socially definitely covers your side of the ledger.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can have, well, we don't know who the tenant is, but it's going to be great, right? We're going to have no traffic and the lights are fine, no noise, all this stuff. I don't know how that meets the definition of orderly.
So I don't think, I don't, I don't think anybody said there'll be no traffic, there'll be no this, there'll be no that. There will be, some of those things will happen. It's just how we contain them, how we make things as best they can be if we, if we indeed approve it.
Yeah.
So, you know, and here's another thing you need to understand, this is a special permit. That means they have to get four out of five votes.
Okay.
Normally it would just be a simple majority, three votes would be enough. But because it's a special permit, they will need four out of five votes, a supermajority in order to get their project through. So just so you, just keep that in mind as well.
I appreciate it.
They have to convince the majority of us, a big majority of us, that this is as good for them or as good for you as it is for them.
Okay. Well, I guess my comment then would be it would be a shame if this passes because we're living Panis Road already, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Carl Condon, 188 Beach Street. Last week I asked a couple of specific questions for the Highway Department. Obviously, he's too busy to be here. So did he answer my questions to you to repeat to me?
Can you, can you just remind us of what your questions were?
Was those striping on the streets, what do they mean? And there's certain stripes that have to be put on a road depending upon the size of the road. And what was the width of Beach Street down at my end?
He did.
He did give us something in writing.
He did.
So Paige is going to give you an answer as to what he said.
I'm probably not going to be able to find it. I don't know if we have it in the file, but I don't know if I could open that.
He did write to us about that specific thing, the striping and width.
Because the striping is wrong.
Go ask your other one while we look for this.
Those were the two questions.
Oh, okay.
How wide the street was and the striping.
All right.
Let's see. Morning, I want to clarify a statement that was made regarding the double yellow line on the north end of Beach Street. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Going back through the Google Street View, there were no pavement markings in 2008 or 2012. However, the double yellow line first shows up in the 2015 image. Using a single center line is not a legal pavement marking according to the manual of uniform traffic control devices. It is actually listed as an FAQ in the manual and is a very good explanation as to why it should not be used. So then, and then it has, I don't know if we want to read it, but why can't a single solid yellow line be used on a roadway open to public travel? So there's a link here, we can put that up, but I don't think I'm going to read it now, but it basically goes through the whole information. And we do have our traffic consultant here in case there's any specific questions, although it's kind of putting her on the spot, but...
Well, because before in the past, because I lived at the same residence for 50 years, so I've seen a lot around here. And a long time ago, there was no line. Then you repaved it, one single line, repaved it again, no line, no line, I complained. Next thing I know, there's white lines, yellow lines.
But not a double line?
Again, I think the highway department, the state and the standards have gotten much more specific and strict over time. I mean, Chris acknowledged that, there were periods of time when it was not striped. Nowadays, and if our traffic consultant correct, could correct me, but I believe nowadays when you go to do things, you have to do them by the manual and by the book or there's liability issues. So my hunch is, is that they're going by current standards of today.
That's fine, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hi, my name is Marie Jacinto and I live on 3 Tucker Lane with my husband and my two-year-old son. So based on the proposed plans, the warehouse facility, employee parking would be starting 100 feet from our house. That is essentially from here, probably to the back of this room. You know, we would completely lose all privacy. You know, we're left with the noise of cars pulling in and out of parking spaces along with all of the trucks with these in and out of bays 24 hours a day. We've already gone over this. I mean, the noise would be absolutely absurd. It is undeniable. There's really, I just can't even see a way that there wouldn't be this amount of noise. You know, really it's, would, would anybody want that behind them? Would you guys want that behind your homes? I, I feel that the answer is confidently no. You know, we, we live in a beautiful residential area. It's, it's, you know, we, we want to keep it that way. We purchased our home roughly three and a half years ago. We really were drawn to Foxborough because of the hometown feel. It's, it's a beautiful town. It's, it's a safe environment. That's why we wanted to raise our son here. You know, we just never even would have imagined something like this going in behind us. And, you know, the jokes, I forget who made it, you know, but what could be worse would be a prison is, is so true. It's, it's, this is the worst-case scenario in my mind. You know, projects like this can really determine what makes up our town. It's not about the tax dollars received from this. You know, it's about the direction we want our town to head in. I really do not want to see this town being made as a hub for trucking facilities and warehouses certainly do not add any appeal. You know, we, we appreciate Foxborough for all that it does to make this town feel united and people genuinely love to live here. Having this directly behind our home would definitely not increase any value. It would just be a nuisance and a massive headache 24/7 to us and anyone that would potentially buy our home in the future. You know, I, I view where I live as a residential area. I know to them it's commercial land, I get it, there's that line drawn clearly. But if, you know, we had that zoomed-in view before, being on, you know, 3 Tucker Lane, our entire backyard is this employee parking. That is going to be my view when I go out in my backyard with my son every single time. That's absolutely horrific to see. I do not want to view that every single day. And he loves to be outside. So, you know, having hundreds of people in and out of this 225,000-square-foot facility, it's just a bother constantly to myself, my husband, my child. You know, we just don't feel comfortable with that many people in and out of all hours of the day while we're trying to sleep with or without sound barriers present. I think the bottom line here is that the size and the scope of this project is completely unnecessary and this is leaving many Foxborough residents enraged, including myself and my family. We would hope that the planning board would see just how badly this will affect us and all of those from not only our town but surrounding towns that not going to go on traffic again, but that, that use these roads. But, you know, I, I just think putting my cell phone aside here and just speaking to you guys directly, it's, it's really unnecessary. I really, really hope that you guys would consider not putting this through. There are other things that can go there and this is not one of them. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Jacinto, 3 Tucker Lane, now is my lovely wife. Just one question about the pictures that were brought up for the views in the backyard. Thank you to the board for having concerns about the backyard views of Tucker Lane. You showed picture A. I was just going to ask, picture B I thought was a bad representation, so was it possible to get it retaken? The picture is from our cul-de-sac. You could see, I don't know if they're able to bring the picture up again. If they don't want to, that's okay. There were two gray boxes that were my, the left house was the left box and the left gray box was my house, the right gray box is my neighbor. So picture B, yes, my neighbor, that's 1 Tucker and 3 Tucker. So this picture is from the cul-de-sac. Both of those houses are very elevated, so I don't think this is a good representation. I only bring it up because you did ask and you were concerned about the view. I don't think this picture is a good representation of the view, so I can give my cell phone and my address if somebody wouldn't mind taking it again in our backyard to see that elevated view because both of these houses are about 10 feet elevated from where this picture was taken. And this is from the street. You can see that it's actually from the front yard. So that was just one extra thing I would just want to ask for. I don't know if I need to send an email or something like that, but if you were going to use this as part of your decision, I would, I would ask this one be retaken to just have a more realistic view. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. I was just speaking to Kevin. I would like to do a site visit here. Which means we actually... We have, we have to post it, there's an official procedure we have to go through, but I would like to, I would like to see this firsthand, besides me when I go for a run and you all have offered to let me in your yards, but that would be a little awkward. You'll see the strange lady, but...
10 minutes, just so you know.
Yeah. So you'll have about 10, a little less than 10 minutes before we have to go, but go ahead.
I'm going to be quick. Name's Kenoretsch. I live on 138 Beach Street. There's been three meetings about this that's been going on and it seems from being back there, this is three separate meetings, okay? Every meeting that you come back with new information, it's information that's supplied by the people out here telling you and screaming to you about this project, okay? So that is one thing I hope you guys are picking up on. This story's changed three times now, okay? And it really has. So sit back and think about this. Number two, you're using Gillette as a turnaround. The only problem with that is you're going to have to reconstruct the exit coming out in order for that truck to make that turn to get back out. Oh yeah, that's a C-turn coming out of Gillette Stadium. That's an exit. When you come in out of Gillette Stadium, that is a C-turn coming out of the stadium. That is not an actual turn where you can take a tractor-trailer and bend it around the point of that corner without going over the sidewalk, period. I know it is for sure. Okay, I drove it. I'm just letting you know.
It was supposed to have been designed to handle that, so we will...
It's impossible to turn a truck there, okay? 25 years with a CDL license, I'm telling you, you cannot turn a truck around there. I live 1,000 feet away from the industrial park that's on whatever road that is. I hear them clear as day. 100 feet is going to be like you people living in their living room and that's an insult. This is ridiculous. This is not needed in any way, shape or form for the people, for the town. The only thing it's good for is them and their pocket. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's George Georginas. I'm the face of 5 Tucker Lane. Of 5, excuse me, Tucker Lane's well represented here this evening. I will be honest with you, a lot of people stole my thunder, so I'm not going to be redundant. It doesn't need to be repeated. The scope of this project is going to dominate the neighborhood, not just Tucker, certainly Beach Street, Meadowview, North Street. The scope of this project is huge. So this is like Goliath taking on Little David. And that's the way that I look at it. So I've been a resident here for 25 years. I was a city kid, moved out here, loved it, still love it. I hope I can continue to love it, not so sure. I will tell you that of the five homes on Tucker Lane, one of them was sold within the last month. I can't tell you, and I know him well, obviously, this wasn't the sole reason why he sold, but it was a big part of it. And he wasn't trusting because he had a bad experience with members of boards going back and he felt very strongly that we would not be specific to us. Tucker Lane, well represented. So he saw the opportunity and he took it and he sold. My hope is that this isn't going to be a fire sale for the rest of the neighborhood, including Meadowview and Beach and Willis Lane. So appreciate your time very much and I'm glad you are listening to us, so thank you.
Very welcome.
Make motion to continue the public hearing until August 11th at... 7:45.
Well, it might start late because we have another hearing, but we don't want to risk...
We have the 205 East Street one beforehand.
So it's dicey, because in case that didn't go forward, we'd be sitting around for an hour, we wouldn't be able to start the hearing.
Do we want to put it at 7:30?
We could do either 7:45 or 8, but there's a risk that we...
I would do 7:45.
And we'll assume it's here, but again, we still have the issue with the chairs, so we haven't received confirmation we can be here, but we'll assume it's here, and we'll send out notices as we did before if we have to change venue.
Hold on one second.
Make motion to adjourn.
No, you do the motion to continue, you got about that.
Oh, vote on a motion to continue, August 11th.
Hold on one second.
Can I ask, can I be the point person for the, setting up the site visit? I'll set it up for Meadowview.
What's your name?
George Georginas. Email?
Yeah, you can send us an email.
I absolutely would. So I'll be the point person, if everybody's fine with it, I'll set it up. So Willis, Meadowview, Tucker, Beach, wherever you want to see, I'll make sure it happens.
Consider yourself hired.
Okay?
You said wait a second.
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'll be back. I was just making sure he was here. And I am, he'll be back.
Okay.
That's fine, the 11th is fine.
Okay, so make motion to continue the public hearing until August 11th at 7:45.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What's that?